All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Norfolk Planning Board Meeting for Tuesday, April 8, 2025. It is 7:00 PM. We're gathered here in Town Hall, meeting room 124. In accordance with the provisions of Master and Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, notice was hereby provided that the Planning Board will be meeting this evening here at Town Hall. Members of the public are welcome to attend the in-person meeting. Or you can connect via remote, that via Zoom that is provided as well. Please note that in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the remote connection. And the Zoom link and the call-in button were provided on the town's website. It'll also be livestreamed on NCTV and recorded for the YouTube channel if you so desire to watch the set at a later time. So tonight, we do have a very full agenda. We have several public hearings. We have a public hearing for 7H Sharon. We have three public hearings for zoning bylaw amendments for the annual town meeting that's coming up in May. And then we have some new business items for some minutes and an acceptance of a street acceptance and some other items. So let's get started with our first public hearing, which is 7:00 PM this evening for H. Sharon Ave. It is a continuation from the March 11, 2025 meeting. It's for a site plan approval and stormwater management permit for the proposed multi-tenant commercial building. So we will get started with that. Who do we have here to represent? I believe we have the property owners are here in person. And then we have their engineer on Zoom.
Yes. Good evening, Dan American with Legacy Engineering. There we go. Thank you. You guys see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so when we last, we had basically worked through most of the revisions and we're just about to send them off to your peer review consultant for a review. And that's been done. There haven't been a lot of changes. One of the things that we did for the request of the fire chief is we added a fire hydrant near this driveway entrance. So that would come off of the water main in the street. We shifted this parking space further away from the building just to provide a wider access point. And then that parking space ended up going over to the other side. So there's no net reduction in parking. The rest of it was all pretty technical stuff. Happy to answer any questions about that. We did also, you may recall, we had a conversation about how to break up the front side of the building. And what the applicant's building contractor came up with was a plan to add these projections. So the blue, and they would be colored blue, consistent with the other trim of the building, they would be these eight-inch-deep projections that would extend out from the face of the building. So they would be eight inches deep and they would be a couple of feet wide. And they would basically just create the visual appearance of, you know, a shadow line across the front of the building. And it would break into thirds. There will also be gutters on the front of the building. Those are illustrated here in gray. We updated the planting plan to show that we would have taller, more conical types of shrubs at these breakpoints in the building just again to provide some more visual difference between those areas of the building. And the other thing that we talked about at the meeting, which I had not, did not have on the plan of the last meeting, was that we're going to enhance the existing wood line across the front of the property, which is going to remain with some additional evergreen trees. So the building is going to be pretty screened from the street. There's not going to be a lot of visibility except at driveway entrances. The last thing that we chatted about was, there was a conversation about what might the town do with respect to trying to slow down some speeds on Sharon's Ave. And you asked us to retain our traffic consultant to kind of take a look and make some suggestions about what the town might be able to do. And our consultant, Kimberly Horn Associates, they indicated that the easiest thing to do, the most straightforward thing to do, would be to basically stripe the driving lanes to a narrow width. And that, what that does is that creates the appearance as you're driving down the road that the driving lane that you're in is narrower and it tends to make people drive slower. And some signage could be added, slow speed warning signs, advisory speed signs of 20 miles, 25 miles per hour. I know that you've received some commentary from DPW and the Police Department on those suggestions. I don't know really what the town ultimately wants to do, given that the Police Department is right up the road here. But we're happy to have that conversation with you about that. Those are the highlights. There wasn't a lot going on.
Okay. Was that it?
Yes.
Okay. So the one thing I did want to comment on was that the last thing you mentioned was the kind of controlling the traffic or trying to mitigate the speed. Rich, I think you had reached out to DPW on that? And what was their thoughts?
So they were supportive of the concept of the signs being up in the visor in terms of speed and then creating, which I would call the fog line, but essentially define the travel lane, which then would create a shoulder, if you will, right? Between the travel lane as a means to...
Oh, we lost the TV.
Lost the TV?
We just lost signal. Oh, there's back. So DPW seemed to be fine with those recommendations? And it didn't seem like it would be detrimental in any way?
No.
Benefit? I don't know if, I mean, have we reached out to the police chief to see if there was any concerns or comments about it? I mean, we're not really, we're not adding speed bumps. We're not.
No, he actually, he was fine with those recommendations as well. Let me see.
Blair mentioned the speed humps. They're not recommended.
Yeah, I can imagine for various reasons. And I would imagine the police chief would not like those as well.
Oh, right. With all of his team coming out, going to emergency calls, flying over them. Yeah. It might not be practical.
No.
So the police chief was... The larger one was the, which the chief was about the, was the island? Down at the intersection of...
He was concerned about the island? Yeah. Yeah. I'd be concerned about that as well.
But he was supportive of the speed.
The signs and the striping?
The striping, yes.
Phil, I know you're on the call. I know, so we probably need to get into the review with Beta. Are there any open concerns or comments?
So let me introduce to you a new member to our team, Steve Lee. He's online here as well. He has 14 years of experience. Most pertinently, he's got 10 years of land development experience. And he was the chief reviewer for this project. And I'll let him speak to that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hello, all the members of the Planning Board. Firstly, it's really nice to meet you. It's an honor to be able to work with the Town of Norfolk on items like this. So to answer your question in brief, there aren't really any outstanding items. All of the items, we've gone through two rounds of reviews and most of the items are handled. One of the items refers to, they added a waiver onto their plan as far as they're proposing a 10-inch HDPE pipe, simply because the chambers that they're proposing are only 12 inches tall. So the only thing that will fit is a 10-inch pipe. They've requested a waiver. It's on the cover of the updated plan set. And then there was one other minor item. It was more of like a clerical thing that they can fix as far as they had moved, they had referred to moving the ADA spot up north one space. And it already appears like it's been updated. You can see the spot grays over the corners now. So as our response to that, we had simply said that that should be updated prior to the submission of the final plans for incorporation. All other items were minor and were addressed accordingly. So yes, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it. So it was...
That's good to know. I appreciate you working through that with them. Yep, that's great. So as far as waivers, what do we, so we have...
So one was just identified.
waiver of traffic impacts. And then there's that one drainage waiver.
Yep. Yep. Okay. Board members? We went through the whole list last meeting, but feel free to go through it again.
Seems like some of our requests were handled, you know, with separating some of the visual pieces on the front side of the building there. And this looks good.
I know we asked last time, but was the roof ready for adding solar in the future?
I don't know the answer to that. Bill or Chris, I think you were going to check on that?
Yeah, we didn't ask. I didn't think that was, sorry.
I'm not sure if it's a...
I don't know if it's a requirement. We heard on a previous one that, wish we had done it after it was built and it was too late at that point, but...
So you would, probably makes sense to talk to the contractor and, you know, when the building, to make, you know, if you want exactly, know ahead of time. So if you want to be able to do it, it's ready. Because that would be far preferable for you and also the town, that we could just install them on the roof and then you don't have to do ground mount if you want to do that. There's really not a lot of room anyway.
They often pay for themselves, so, right.
They definitely do.
I just put it in my house six months ago, so I'm open to it.
Yep. Okay. Any questions for anybody in the room or on Zoom? Okay. From a traffic calming standpoint, are we comfortable as a board recommending the, those two, the striping and the signage?
Yes. Can I just ask, what was it about the island that the police chief wanted? I see the email. I just don't know what he's talking, is there one already there?
No, there was a recommendation to add an island down at the end of Sharon's Ave and Dedham. And that, so to add an island there, just again as a traffic calming mechanism for people turning in and turning out. But that, that would obviously be coming at a significant cost to build that. Plus, you'd have to do a full analysis with turning movements. And yeah, and the fire...
Stormwater too, actually.
Yeah. I mean, it just starts, it just snowballs into all these other things that have to be considered with fire, police, DPW. And so I don't, that's a pretty big ask.
It could still be done, not under this project.
It could be done, yeah. It definitely could be done at a different time. I just, I don't know if it warranted it, this project.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing too is when you're coming out of even the store there and the gas station, when you're taking a left, there's very small signs there and it's hard to see around them. And we'd be adding yet another one slightly further. So, I mean, I like the idea. I just don't know that it's practical.
You, no, that's not your store, right? The golf, the site?
The gas station.
So one thing to consider is actually lowering the sign?
The ones that tell you, drive this way, enter exit?
Yeah, the in and outs signs?
Because it does block your line of sight a little bit.
If you're in a car.
If you're in a car.
If you're in a truck, it doesn't. But if, I know exactly what you're talking about.
It blocks your line of sight. And there isn't really a shoulder on Dedham Street, you know, to be able to kind of nudge out a little bit. Definitely something that, I know you drive a Jeep and so you're way above. You probably don't see it, but I will tell you, it definitely does, it can...
I have a Jeep too, and it's in my way. But I'm also, I mean, I'm very short, so maybe that's part of the problem.
Depends where you sit in the vehicle, but it does, it does, it blocks the line of sight. It definitely can.
So it's not related to this project, but just to comment?
Since you're here.
Since you're here.
We are customers.
It does impede the site distance with the...
And you can see we're going to your location, so.
Yeah, that's how we know.
The last thing would be, more importantly, is the payment of the signs and the striping. Is that, is that something you've thought about?
So how many signs? And what is it again? The striping on the street, are we allowed as...
You'd have to iron out exactly that sign.
It'll be through the DPW, so it's not, yeah.
Yeah, the DPW would take care of the signing and the striping, but it would be, you'd coordinate it through them. Or we'd be looking to have you compensate for that as a traffic controlling for the project?
So the sign and just the striping?
Yep.
Correct.
Yep. So there's already a center line striping?
There is, yeah.
Do you look into add the exterior striping to create those 10-foot-wide lanes? And then I think there was three signs? There was a handful that there was recommended. Dan, what was, do you remember what the recommendation was from Kimberly?
Well, I think we'd have to iron out specifically with DPW exactly what they would want to see. But it was a speed warning, slow sign with an advisory speed sign of 25 miles an hour. So that's, you know, that's two signs on one sign post. But we would, we'd want to iron out exactly what those signs would be with DPW. So I'm thinking there would be one sign at the bottom of Sharon and one sign at the top of Sharon.
One posted each with multiple signs on the post?
One post, yes.
So two posts and probably two signs on each post? That'd be something, okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns? So then, Rich, we need to close this and then vote on the decision?
Yes.
Any, so Phil and Steve from Beta, any other final comments?
No.
I appreciate you both being here and providing the input and working with Dan at Legacy on that. That's great. Dan, anything else you want to, from Legacy?
No, thanks.
Okay.
I think we're all set.
Great. Well, then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing for H. Sharon Ave site plan approval and stormwater management permit for the multi-tenant commercial building.
It's moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. So hearing is closed. So Rich, do you...
We have three decisions. Earth removal, stormwater, and site plan.
Okay. So the site plan is, I believe, the first one I have here. Give me a minute to...
You already took Chris off, right?
Rich, does the site plan have the, do you need us to vote on these individually? Or can we vote them together?
You can vote them together. But no, I would do the site separately and...
Do the site plan separately and...
So the only addition to that site plan decision would be the waiver of that pipe?
And what about the signage and striping?
That I already did presume and put it in there.
It's easier to add and strike it than...
Yeah. I put that under the, under the waiver that they will... Let's see, open up the waiver. The way it drafted, in the waiver, the traffic consultant, Kimberly Horn, proposed some traffic calming measures to reduce speeds that the applicant will install at the direction of the DPW director. So I could, we could tweak it a little bit, but that essentially infers that they're paying for it. I mean...
The waiver is granted because the vehicle trip generator is an expert. Traffic consultant Kimberly proposed some traffic calming measures to reduce the speeds and applicant will install. I think it would be good to put in the couple items, because it's a little open-ended. I think it would be good to narrow the focus of that. You know, Kimberly proposed some traffic calming measure or...
Yeah, we can do that if you want to vote that and then we'll just tweak the decision and put that in there.
Yeah, I think it would be good to put in, Kimberly proposed some traffic calming measures and to reduce the speeds.
We can put what they are, what the recommendation is.
Yeah.
Yeah, those specific things.
Those specific things, the striping and the signage. And then...
And then we would just modify the waiver list to include the 10-inch.
And then you want to add a third waiver then?
Right.
For, to include the 10-inch, what was the pipe on?
Condition 19, it says that all the waivers have been dreaded and noted on the cover of the set.
Yeah, just, I'll just add it in the waiver. And yes, 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 Eric, you're right. I just, I'll just tweak the decision so it's in that waiver section. Which is page, what, yeah, one?
Where was that?
What's that? The pipe?
For the pipe, yeah.
What's that pipe?
What was that pipe called, that 10-inch pipe?
10-inch, yeah.
Dan, Stephen, Phil?
On the screen there. For a 10-inch HDPE pipe.
HDP.
So the two, that waiver is on the cover sheet. So you can reference that from Section 325-4.19.2.2. G. For that drainage pipe smaller than 12-inch.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments on site plan approval? I think that's it.
Good.
Okay, so...
And then the other, like I said, the other two, so stormwater permit, earth removal.
Right. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the site plan application decision number 2025-01 with, as written, with a few modifications. One being the adding in the, the two items for the traffic calming measures, which are the striping and the signage. And then a third waiver for the 10-inch HDPE pipe.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? So site plan application has been approved. Then we will go to the stormwater management report. And you're okay with us doing both that and the earth removal?
Why do we keep losing that connection?
I don't know. The TV, does the TV doing that for you on your end too?
It stays on.
Okay, ours just keeps turning off and on. It's...
I wonder if there's a loose connection now.
Okay. We'll work through it. As long as you all can see it, we'll work through it. I don't see any concerns with the stormwater management. Does anybody else? Okay, so then the earth removal?
Under specific conditions, Rich? This is written with a one-year expiration date? Is that about to change in town meeting? Or can that be, is it going to have to be revised to be applicable to three?
No, that one's in the general bylaws. I suppose we'd have to change, it's not changing.
That's not going to change?
That's not changing. We'd have to do that separately. In town meeting, I guess.
Okay.
We'll have to add that to the...
Good point, Eric.
To-do list. Let's see. But you just have to exercise it, so just say...
At work.
All right, any questions on the earth removal permit?
Nope.
Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the stormwater management permit for H. Sharon Ave and the earth removal permit for H. Sharon Ave, as written.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed? So those have, those three decisions have passed. I think you all have a project ready to move forward with. Wish you the best. Look into the roof structure if you want solar. Make sure it's strong enough if you want to do that.
I'm sure Peter will bring that up to you. Peter, the electrical inspector, he'll probably bring that up because, you know, it's way better to do it at the beginning.
Well, you want, yeah, no, but you want to do it now.
Yeah.
Because when you get to Peter, yeah, look into it now, yeah.
Yep. And if you already have it on your house, you probably already have gone through the whole analysis and realized the benefits. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So we've got a couple minutes before 7:30?
Yeah.
Do you want us to try and squeeze in something, Rich?
Yeah, two minutes. Here we go. There's a letter recommending of DPW director, town accepting Avery Way as a public way. We have the plans in the office. So it seemed appropriate for the board to recommend Avery Way as a public way. it seemed appropriate for the board to recommend Avery Way as a public way to the select board and they'll they'll then take your recommendation and then add their I'm not sure what date it'll probably be. Probably the meeting at the end of the month?
Okay.
Vote to lay it out, so.
And that's already on the-
It's already on the warrant.
It's on the warrant as a placeholder, so.
Yeah. If you wanted the, do you want the specific article number?
No. No, no, no.
No, it's on.
I just wanted to make sure it was on there. And then, do we have that letter in our packet here from DPW or?
It's in the shared, it's in the shared drive. Yeah, it's not-
It is Article 32, in case of anybody's interest.
Yeah, so.
Avery Way, vote of intention, okay.
Oh, let's see.
I better see it in there, because I put it in there.
Yep, vote of, uh-
Yeah, hold on.
I have the vote, vote of intention, oh, that was from the-
Got NASBilt.
Where is that? Did I not put it in there?
I don't-
Oh, you know where it is? I know where it is. Okay. It's in the street acceptance folder.
That's fine, so DPW signed off, said it's good, they're okay with it. They've satisfied all their requirements. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. If Blair's happy, I'm, we should move forward. Any questions? Melissa, you look stumped.
I'm looking at the vote of intention to lay out a town way and I'm just wondering, it's not a question about what's written, it's not even a question about that, I'm just wondering why we bounce back from one board to the next.
Yeah, that's a whole nother topic.
Seems very inefficient, but I have no questions about the actual-
It's way down in the statute that way. We can talk about it at a separate time if you want.
Yeah, not today.
Okay.
Okay, so, all right.
Just follow the law.
I would like-
Appreciate that.
So Rich, you're looking for us to vote to recommend it?
Yes.
To, like recommending it to be approved, accepted by-
To be accepted as a public way.
So I'd like to entertain a motion to accept Avery Way, for the street acceptance of Avery Way at town meeting on May 14, 2025.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so we went a little bit over, but-
7:32.
Done. Okay.
Pretty good overall.
Yep, so now we're getting into our 7:30 public hearing, which is a continuation, so I'd like to open the public hearing for the zoning bylaw amendments related to accessory dwelling units for our May town meeting, which was continued from March 11, 2025. And for reference, this is Article 21 on our town warrant, so thank you, Betsy, for putting that on.
You're welcome.
On the agenda.
Helpful. You have a copy of the warrant?
I do.
We do have, uh, I believe Tony's online too.
He is.
All right, Tony's joining us via Zoom if necessary. Really pretty insignificant, significant comments from the Attorney General, the, in terms of recommended adjustments. The one that's, I would consider of a little more substance is the whole protection against short-term rentals. We had quite a we had quite a beefy section, if you will, and that was recommended to be stricken, so.
Well, they replaced it with something else that mentions fines per day, right, so that takes care of it, just in other words.
No, no, we did have that before in there. If I recall correctly, it was just-
I don't think this is the redline version I've got.
Well, yeah, do you want to pull, yeah, I mean, did every-
Share drive?
Yeah, we had the redline version of it and it, the comments were I would, for the most part, pretty minimal.
Yeah.
I was impressed by that, that was good, so kudos to us and Town Council and everybody that helped put it together. And I'm glad they did get back to us with their comments, so if it does get approved, if it does get approved at town meeting, it should, should hopefully make it through the AG with, with no issues. Is the redline version in there?
It is in there.
I'm not, it's in there, but I'm not sure the redline, I'm looking at the version that's in the shared drive.
If you go under, you have the one with AGL comments in that shared drive?
Yeah. I do, it's the one, but for whatever reason, it didn't save with the redline.
So if you want to, how about switch it over, let me go to my, I have it on the-
Yeah, here, oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, it's in our shared drive that you sent for the-
Is it? Yeah.
With comments, yeah.
Yeah, just the only thing they really changed to the first one, so the 31 days or less, the restriction there, they just, instead of all the language that we had in there about a protective covenant shall be recorded against the property, they put in more official language that is more prescriptive. Oh, there you go.
Yep. Yeah, so they if you scroll up a little bit, they took out, yeah, like Melissa said, they took out some of that language.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, yes. And then they added in the violations and penalties and, okay. That's fine.
Then, uh-
I just wanted to just make sure we're on the same page, Tony Riley here.
Tony, yep.
The revisions in the draft you're looking at are ones that Rich and I worked on. The AG only put in the comments that you see and then any of the revisions that you see were made after, you know, we looked at the comments and decided to make alterations.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, Tony, thank you, appreciate that.
See, I knew I needed you online.
And then, we, so I still see like in number bullet two, B2, I forget, the principle is spelled two different ways in that same item. Which one do we want? I thought we fixed all this last time.
Yeah, we fixed it in the individual documents, but it didn't carry over to this, but it should be PAL.
It should be PAL, right?
Here, I'm going to change it, there you go.
Do, is this the doc-
Hold on.
But let's change it in the, wherever we're gonna-
All right, look on the screen now, please.
Just do a find all principles spelled wrong.
Hold on, because this is the version-
In the warrant?
In the warrant.
Okay, let's look at the one in the warrant.
Well, I'm looking at the one in the warrant.
So B, B2.
Spelled two different ways.
Yep.
Yep, it needs to be fixed.
Are you looking at the one on April 8?
The one printed, it's all correct.
No.
No? Where's the?
Two, B2.
Go to B. B2. Principle spelled two different ways.
But it's the idea. Yeah, we got to fix that.
Yep.
So it should be PLE.
PAL.
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 So this 2B has-
So find and replace.
Hold on a second.
Yeah.
Look on the screen.
Okay.
2B, P2?
Yep. E2.
It's got PAL.
Yeah, but look at the second to last sentence. Word.
Oh, there, all right.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. And the reason why I want to change it right in here is because I got to turn this over tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, let's do it. Yeah.
And I don't want to-
Yep, no, let's-
So you want to do a find and replace and see if there's any others in there?
Right.
Not really.
Why not?
Because that searches whole warrant.
Yeah, but it'll be fast.
Yeah, it's fast though.
Oh, I see, um.
Where's still wrong? On screen?
No, the spelling would still be wrong, Eric was saying.
What do you mean?
If it was elsewhere in the document.
Just do find, Ctrl F.
Ctrl F.
You'll find the whole document.
Spell principle like it's a-
The wrong way, the LE.
Like on, on principle, I am leaving this meeting.
I know.
See, it's-
There you go.
Little different places, yeah.
Those are principal dwellings, though, should all be yellow.
Yeah.
So then you can just go in and, wherever it's yellow, just fix them.
Yeah.
Replace.
Well, you could do that too.
Mister technology.
So I'm going to do a little bit slower than you all.
Well, Chris isn't here to make fun of you, so.
Chris would have had-
Chris is already fixing it.
Chris would have had it scripted and done by now.
I don't know what's what. All right.
Well, you were typing, I created a Python script that went and found all the-
Oh, I thought, really? I thought, you just didn't whip out some AI tool to little power app?
PySpark.
All right. That's it.
Cool. There were three of them.
Okay.
Change them.
Yeah, change those three and then there was the one that we saw earlier, so that was it.
Okay. And if, and you go into the finder, the find and it's not, nothing's coming up?
Yep.
Good. All right.
I'll close and do it again, one more time, how's that?
Sure.
No, we believe you.
No, I, yeah, yeah.
Is that good?
Yep.
That's confirmation, right?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, so-
So now we go back.
A little housekeeping there, sorry.
Back to the redline though, because it's, I think it's-
A little, little housekeeping.
It's informative.
Okay, so that was B, B1.
Yeah.
Those changes, those-
So discussion with the next one down, which is located, will be, we kept located, correct, Tony?
Yeah, the, I think the AG only, she just chose that word when she put in her comment, but I think she's talking about the entire number six.
Right, and the reason why-
Talked about, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, you go ahead.
You know, so the Attorney Hurley, you know, puts a comment in that the regulations require the application of the most generous dimensional standards. And then in our Section 310-5.1.1B, that includes the dimensional setbacks for accessory structures, so she probably didn't look at our bylaw when she made that comment, but there's no concern that this, you know, violates any of the ADU regulations.
Okay. All right, that's good. Next one.
We did make that change last fall.
Okay. Then setback. So C1?
So we're testing this one out.
Correct? It is not clear the requirements will meet the reasonable regulation test for 760C, okay.
So for this one-
We're not testing that one highlighted, but go ahead.
No, yeah, so, so for this one, the second sentence that says the dwelling unit is not permitted in the front yard and setback, that's fine, because that's, you know, you can't put things in setbacks, so I think what she's referring to is that the ADU cannot be located closer to the front lot line than the principal dwelling. You know, the obvious intent there is to, you know, keep them inside or backyards and not allow them to be built in front yards. You know, I don't think, I don't think it's an unreasonable regulation and the ADU regulations are not necessarily clear that they explicitly say you can't do that, so, you know, this is one that, you know, it's obviously up to the board, but this one might be worth taking a shot, seeing what happens on the actual review to try to stop people from building these things in their front yards.
Okay. Yep. Exactly. All right. Then three, number three, there was some language struck. Just to simplify it about the potable water.
Okay, so I'll, I might as well go down to it, so. Oh, sorry, up to it, so.
Up to it.
Yeah, so we just changed it here.
Yep.
Go back. This is about fees, this isn't just a we don't have fees in the bylaw, that'll be separately done, it's just an advisory in terms of fees.
Yep.
We will be talking about fees a little bit later, so.
Okay. Yeah, because we're not going to include the fees in here, so it's more or less just a reminder, yeah, all right.
So that was it?
Cool. Yeah, wow, great.
So now that I edited the document, in principle.
Yes.
For the word, not on principle.
Yeah, I am, but that was the problem with the word.
That was the problem with the word. Isn't that interesting?
Any other comments from the board?
No, this is good.
Any comments from anybody on Zoom or in the room? Those do rhyme, I kind of like seeing that. Okay. Are we-
Ready to close the hearing.
I think we're, I think we're at a point, yeah, where we can close this and hand it off.
Sweet.
As final.
It's pretty exciting.
So, yeah, this is, this is good, I appreciate everybody's input and on this.
I just want to see what the first ADU is going to be, I just want to fast forward to see if anybody actually-
I bet you they will.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. So I can think of several people that actually mentioned this to me before this even came out, like a year or more ago, said, boy, I'd love to do this, and we can't, so I'm sure it's going to happen.
We're in the streets, there's more interest in renting at the moment, but we have, we've had some light, nothing of-
Yep. So, okay, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the accessory dwelling units for town meeting on May 14.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, public meeting is closed. For that, I would like to, I guess, spend a little bit of time talking about we can either do this now or do it at the end, talking about getting ready for town meeting for the, you know, and how do we want to present this article. Do you want to save all that for the end, Rich, or?
Uh, yeah, I kind of think so.
Okay.
Is that right?
That's fine, yeah, no, that's fine, it's just, I just don't want us to forget, we do need to talk-
Because we have the other zoning.
We need to talk about all the articles and how we want to present these at town meeting as far as what visual aids we want, handouts, slides and so forth, and I know some of, I know we've started working on some of that, but we've got this meeting and then we have the meeting right, we have the meeting the day before town meeting, so we really need to hammer out the details tonight.
The state has ADU like explainer kits, right, so we can probably borrow from-
There's been a very enhanced version developed that we'll share a little bit later.
Ah, okay, yeah.
So.
We got some visual aids.
All right, perfect.
It's been a-
As long as we have the visual aids.
It has a stepped up piece to it, and incorporate some of those, not to steal the show.
Okay.
So we could just, to kind of wrap it up, right after this, the 7:40 public hearing, you could do it, because then we're going to get into the-
All right. That's fine, all right, so let's roll into, let's roll into our 7:35 public hearing.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need to vote it though.
Yeah, we got to vote.
Oh, yeah.
Whoa, yeah. So you can vote it as Article 21 as shown in File 4.8.2.5, executed warrant zoning bylaw edits. See all that?
No, I can't use that from here.
You can?
So okay, so-
Hold on.
No, I see it, 4.2, 4.8.2.5, is that what you call it?
4.8.2.5 executed warrant zoning bylaw edits.
Is that in the shared drive?
It's in the shared drive, yeah.
It's in the shared drive.
Sorry.
4.8 executed edits.
Executed warrant zoning bylaw edits.
I got you, okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion to you want us to approve it or endorse it or submit it or? What?
Prove it as written.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve Article 21 for accessory dwelling units as written. In document 4.8.25 executed warrant zoning bylaw edits.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. Okay, so let's open the public hearing for the zoning bylaw amendments. For Article 22, which is electrical vehicle charging, Article 26, which is. The zoning board of appeal and permit granting authority, Article 23, which is the floodplain. Article 26, which is estate lots, and Article 25, which is special permits for the May 14th annual town meeting, which was continued from March 11th, 2025. It's written 24 on the agenda. That's fine.
Is it?
That's fine. It's an agenda. It's good. We, we adjusted. We pivoted. That's all good.
Appreciate that.
Okay. So we have Article, let's start with 22. So electrical vehicle charging. That is.
So now this one is. We did talk about last. Public hearing. This is the version with those edits that are on that warrant. I think Tony, is he still with us?
No, he dropped. Lost him.
All right.
So this is on page.
Has anything else been revised?
No, not revised, but we went to advisory and there was the what if. And I think. It was pretty stretched. To think somebody would. Rob Gary had said, well, what if I put in a type one or type two. Charging as, as a part of a commercial. EV charging, am I not going to be subject to the special permit process? Because we're the type one and two are just part of the, the code. And for whether it's a single family home or a multifamily and so forth. If somebody was going to put in a one and two, I don't know if they really would, but perhaps they did. Projects that go through site plan would be part of that site plan process. So they would be covered there. But we do have. Commercial EV charging as a special permit use in the residential district. So his what if was, hey, what if I put a. Commercial. EV charging station in a residential district and I have a couple of that. That aren't type three or four. Does that allow me to circumvent? Special permit. That's why I deferred to, I thought they might still been on. We talked about, it's like, that's, that's really stretching to the extent. Because the. That would also have to mean that they would have to. If you went there with a type one, they're not charging you.
Yeah, no one will pay for that. It takes 24 hours to get charged.
So under Rob's example?
Rob's example is he would make the type ones for free.
Right there for getting the. Partial ones.
Yeah.
So.
He would, I mean, he's trying to break the system. That's, that's what he's doing on advisor. He's trying to break it.
Yeah.
Trying to break it, but kind of thinking it through a little bit.
Did he have a suggestion to?
Well, he wanted to change the definition to be partial, like revise the definition. So Tony suggested frankly, if somebody came in and tried to do that, we would challenge them.
Right.
That that's not your circumventing, that's.
Right.
Subject to, if they don't like it, they could take us to court.
Yeah.
Try to circumvent it, particularly in a, in a residential district.
Okay.
So having said that, there are no changes from the last meeting.
Okay. The, the one thing I saw, and I, I thought we removed this, like, so on the schedule of use. I thought we took out all the rows that weren't impacted. Because it, it just, there's too much data there. I thought we were just going to have the commercial electrical vehicle. Line, the one line.
Telephone lines or the truck terminal.
Because why even, why even have that in there if we're not changing it? It's just distracting. And could be confused. Because I, I'm looking at it right now, go, oh, what are we changing there? And I'm like, oh, we're only changing that one row.
All right, done.
If, right, we talked about that line.
Yeah.
We did, yeah.
Why, why have it there? Yeah. Okay.
All right.
So that'll be cleaner and easy, and it'll shorten it up.
Yep.
Okay. I don't have any. Anybody else? Questions, comments? Anyone from Zoom, the room?
I think just do a final, just do one final spell check, because I think electric, there was, it was spelled wrong somewhere. So just do a quick spell check before you finalize it.
British way?
What's the British way? Or the, the French way? Like color and. Color.
It was in one of the, it was in one of the, let's see.
Just hit F7.
Or maybe it was vehicle. I think it was vehicle. It was spelled.
What's that? F7?
Yeah, it'll do a full spell check, grammar check and everything. Oh, I don't know about that.
You don't have to do it now. You can do it later. Just do.
Well, I want to get it.
Well, no, we need to.
We want to do it now so we can.
Yeah, before we vote.
So we can approve it.
Electric.
Oh, gotcha.
Electric, electric, electric.
Electric or vehicle. It was, it was in one of those. Tony might have caught it actually. Let me look.
Well, this is Google, so I don't, is F7 the right one for spell check?
That's Google? That looks like Word.
No, I have Word.
Yeah, I'm doing it in Google. So. Yeah, vehicle.
Do you think vehicles misspelled?
It was like vehicole somewhere.
In the definition. You got building and then you have electric vehicle and it's spelled wrong. Vehicle spelled wrong.
So all the way to the top, I think you gotta go.
Vecicle.
I dare.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yep. The bold, the, not the bold, the cap, the all cap word.
The both.
Yep, vehicole.
That's all over the place.
I know.
It's not all over the place. It's different in different places.
Yeah, it's not good. It does work in Google, though. Vecicle.
Or.
People think that we look at site plans all day, but the amount of like. No, we don't. Pedantry and like spell checking is just.
The spell right?
School teachers jealous.
Well. I just want to.
You're making Betsy proud.
Does it? Did I spell right there? V E H I C L E?
Yes.
Vehicle.
Oh, look at that.
Forty-two.
Forty-two replacements.
What?
Yeah.
Was missed, put forty-two times.
We gotta fix that.
Are you kidding me?
Yeah. No, look at that. See on the screen?
Forty-two places in the.
Yeah.
Okay, good thing we did that.
I just.
In the, well, you, you can bring out it.
So then. After you finish that. Go down to where the use table is. And then. The word electric has two E, it's capital E lowercase e.
Well, that's because we're making it lowercase now.
Oh, it's a strike through.
It's a strike through.
Oh, it's a strike.
Yeah.
I got you. Okay. Yeah, I can't see it on, it's screen small.
Okay, so that one.
That's legit. That's legit because of the bold. Yep. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine.
But over now, we, so we. We clean that up.
Yeah, that would, that, that'd be a little embarrassing, the way we spelled vehicles wrong.
Forty-two times. Yeah.
Why are some of these headers have? A period at the end of them and some don't?
I think that's just the way that E code. I think when it encode did it, I think that's just the way they.
They did it on some and I'm looking back at the, the one that we just did on solar and it doesn't have it. Maybe that's because that's brand new and they haven't.
Maybe.
Marked it up yet?
Maybe. Good point. Okay, any other comments on Article 22, electrical vehicle? Okay, then let's move on to Article 26.
Do you want to vote it separately or all together?
I, I.
Do it all.
I would like to do it all together.
That's fine. Yep. Okay. Twenty-three?
So, okay. Well, I was, can we just, let's go in order of, yeah, zoning board of appeals, planning board and permit granting list, Article 26. I just follow the agenda.
That's fine.
Yep. So.
So we changed required before it was triggered. And then we changed and put current as opposed to the calendar year.
Right. Okay, any? Comments, questions, concerns? On those changes? Okay.
Looks good.
Anyone in the room, Zoom? All right. Next one is Article 23, the floodplain. So that was updating the date for the FEMA maps.
Yep.
July.
From July 6, 2021 to July 8, 2025. Comma did come up at advisory. How, why is it a future date? Because that's the date FEMA, or that's the date we were asked to put, because those would be the official.
Effective.
The effective date of the maps.
Yep.
So. So we have that and then there's.
We just struck out.
Some strike through on the addresses because they were not, not needed. Questions?
Nope.
All right, so then Article 24. Is the estate lots and we are changing the permit from a two to three year. So that we're basically following the same cadence that the state allows.
Yes.
So we can. Um, that's, that's, that's the justification for that.
What's with the formatting?
I don't know. It became justified.
Don't worry, it'll be fine in the wash.
Okay. ECO to fix it.
I think you can highlight it and fix it.
Questions on, uh.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Anything to change?
Spacing? I think there's a.
Fill it wide instead of.
No.
Go to the left.
This one?
Yep.
Now it's readable.
Cool. Yeah, I'm learning so much tonight. I'm excited about this.
Thank you. Okay, any questions on? Twenty-four. For the estate lot special permits. Okay. Twenty-five. Is the special permits again, same, same idea, same rationale as we're. Changing the one year to three years to align with what the state allows.
Yes.
Looks good.
Questions, comments, concerns? Okay.
And there is a. It's hard to see, but there is a bold S in there. After year, it's kind of, it's there.
Yes, I do see that. So it does say three years.
Years.
And the S is bold.
Just a.
Thank you.
All right. Cool. So that was it.
That's it for, um, the 735 public. Uh, any questions?
Last ones are easy.
Yep. All right, I will like to entertain a motion to. Close the public hearing for the proposed zoning bylaw amendments, Articles 21, 26, 23, 24 and 25.
I think we already voted 21.
We haven't voted on any of them. We just wanted to close the public hearing.
You did vote.
No, we, we did.
Did you say 21?
We voted.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Let me rephrase that. Like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the zoning bylaw amendments for 22. 23, 24, 25 and 26.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Great.
Thank you for keeping me honest. That's good. All right. So, uh, I will entertain a motion to. Approve the zoning bylaw amendments for Articles. 22, 23, 24, 25 and 26 as written in. The document called 4.8.25 executed warrant zoning bylaw edits. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, that has passed. All right, so we will move on to the next public hearing, which is the.
Article 34.
So this is a. This is new, so we need to read it in. This is not a continuation. So I will hand this off to Melissa to read in.
Here we go. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter 40A of the MGL. That the Norfolk Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. At 7:40 PM at Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane. Uh, in Norfolk to discuss proposed changes to the Norfolk zoning bylaws. Which have been submitted for the warrant, uh, for the 514. 2025 annual town meeting. Complete copies of the text amendments are available. For review on the town of Norfolk website or in the planning board office during the hours of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Thursday. The proposed zoning bylaw amendments are as follows. To see if the town of Norfolk will vote to amend the Norfolk zoning bylaw, section 310 dash eight dot five. It is the, I'll spare you all the legalese and just tell you that it's the MBTA overlay that we have in Pondville. We will be discussing whether or not to amend. The zoning and we have some folks here that are from the Pondville area that I'm sure will have questions, but that's what this particular article, this, uh. Public hearing is to talk about and we have some slides to show you and go through it and then we'll take some questions after.
Thank you, Melissa. So. We do have, we, we discussed this kind of informally at our, at our last. Planning board meeting. So we now have a, a public hearing. Rich, do you want to give a quick kind of overview of?
Well. Melissa. Or just gonna give an overview, but slide show, Betsy's gonna. Cool, that's, yeah, so Melissa's gonna go through slides.
Oh, Ashley, are you on the Google Drive?
Oh, yeah. Uh, yeah.
I put it in there. So Eric, I'm gonna go back and let you.
Never mind. What the heck is it?
So which file are we?
It is. Norfolk Town Meeting. 2025 Pondville Crossing. I just added it.
There we are.
Yeah, that's the latest because that was the slide updated.
There we go.
All right. So you can just go ahead. I just wanted to have that a cover there. So we started creating these slides ahead of time for all of the rest of the board members that, you know, we started creating these slides ahead of time because we're going to have to have them created for town meeting anyway. So we figured, put a first draft together, use them for this meeting and then based on the questions we get, we can, we can kind of iterate from there. And so we have, so we're going to be going through some, some different options. One of them, if you want to just go to the next slide, we'll just show them all the photos. In Pondville, there is a 40B being proposed. It is 35 Pine Street LLC. They've filed for a project eligibility letter. From mass housing. This actually originally started as, it was supposed to be a traditional. Traditional neighborhood. I'm not sure exactly if you remember how many units it was supposed to be originally, but it started as a traditional. And then now it has switched over to a 40B because that is something that's, it's honestly, it's just economically better for the developer. So now we're looking at a 40B. The proposal, you can see a couple of the renderings that we have here. The proposal, you can see a couple of the renderings that we have here. 200 units, they would all be rentals. It's approximately, right as is in those photos, it's approximately, or renderings, it's approximately 27 units per acre. With the 40Bs, they have to be 10%, 10% of the affordable units have to be three bedrooms, so that would be welcoming, uh, some families most likely. All 200 units, uh, in this particular case, because it is 40B and they are rentals, would count towards our subsidized housing, um, towards our 10% affordable requirement that we have for the town. And you can go to the next slide. You may remember back not too long ago, this was the Pondville Overlay District for MBTA that we, uh, that all of the residents approved at town meeting. That would all stay as it is, most of the lots are already developed as we mentioned. That's the exact same slide that everybody saw previously. So if you saw it before, you read it before, no need to go into too much detail. I just wanted to remind everyone, that's what we showed at the town meeting with Pondville for the Overlay District for MBTA. And then this would just be adding potentially, uh, one more project, which is in that yellow outline right there that you can see on the screen, to the MBTA district. And there are some, some benefits to that, but essentially in this case, we would have, we would have the, the option, well, the developer really has the option. If we get it approved at town meeting, all the residents agree, then the Pondville Crossing parcels would become part of the MBTA Overlay District, which adds approximately eight acres to the 81 that we already have in two different districts across town. And if you remember, the reason we have so many acres for MBTA is that we can keep the buildings short and not have gigantic skyscrapers all around town. So that's why it's 80 plus acres right now. This would be adding eight acres to that over in the Pondville area. We'll go into the specific details of comparing one to the other in, in, I think, the very next slide, actually. But this option, yep, so having MBTA, it provides, it's still multi-family either way. It's just a matter of, um, the density. And we put together this comparison chart to show everybody, um, side by side. And we can go through the pros and cons after, but side by side. The MBTA zoning is the maximum number of units for that particular parcel would end up being, or for that project would be 140 units versus 200 for the 40B. For MBTA zoning, we allow 18 dwelling units per acre. For a 40B, there's actually no limit. This current proposal is 27 dwelling units per acre, um, at the 200 units. Neither of them have age restriction, so that's just, you know, people ask about that all the time, if we're gonna have age restricted included. It came up in a couple of other meetings, so we just have that in there, just to answer that question for folks that might be interested in knowing, does one offer age restriction, the other one doesn't? They actually both don't. A three-bedroom unit, so this is the one where we, this is what strikes people's interest about mostly the schools, I would say. Because three-bedroom units are more likely to have families. The two-in-ones generally don't have as many families, um, based on the data. So three-bedroom units are not required as part of MBTA zoning. And then 10% is, uh, of affordable units. So of the affordable units, 10% of those have to be three-bedroom units with 40Bs. For the affordable percentage required for the town, this is what gets us up to that 10% that we're required to have across the entire town. MBTA requires 10% affordable units. 40B requires 25% affordable units. Now, here's something that's a little bit tricky. So MBTA is pretty straightforward. If you have 140 units, 10% of those, so 14, are the affordable units that count towards our subsidized housing, so affordable number in town. With 40Bs, if they are rentals, the entire number counts towards our town goal. So where we have 200, we would actually see where, you know, that's probably the biggest difference right there, if you, oh, I'm highlighting it, but it's actually your computer, so you guys can't see that. But the, the number of affordable units there, 14 versus 200, I think that's really, for me, as a resident, I was like, oh, gosh, like this is, you know, we need to make sure that residents understand the pros and cons more so than just this as well. So we started going through the pros and cons that are on future slides as well. But just, we thought this would be helpful just to show you side by side. You know, if you have questions, we'd be happy to answer them when we're done with this presentation. But, um, that's probably something that will stand out to most people, I think, at.
There's one more.
At town meeting. And then the permit granting authority, so when you go through, so for MBTA, that actually falls under the planning board. When you come in front of the planning board, we have more, uh, input into the project. And it could be from a design perspective, or it could be, you know, a lot of different ways, really. It could be literally anything, if you've heard any of our meetings.
The whole site layout, the design, everything with that.
Yeah, so we have a lot more input into that. When it goes through the zoning board of appeals through Chapter 40B, that comes basically straight from the state, which is what 40B actually is. It's Chapter 40B, which is state statute, um, for housing. That comes straight through, bypasses a lot of our, um, town zoning bylaws, and goes straight to the zoning board of appeals for them to, uh, you know, go back and forth. It will be a long time, all the 40Bs that we've had have taken many, many years, um, from start to finish. But, um, you know, it will go straight to the ZBA and they will be, uh, asked to approve waivers. And we just, as a town, we have a lot less control over the project, so we thought that was worth mentioning there, uh, compare, in the comparison chart. Now you can go forward. Um, I'll probably, I'm trying to, just so you guys know on the board, I think I'll probably, I'm gonna try to put this into a, instead of two slides with a lot of words, I'll try to put it into a side-by-side table. Just didn't have a lot of time today, yeah. But I figured for the, for the impacts, and if you guys can think of any that you think I should add on here, um, and of course, we'll ask, uh, the folks that are here as well for their input as well. But, um, I wanted to put a list of pros and cons together because I think that's how people are gonna need to see this, um, for the residents that aren't as close to it as, as we are. And even for all of us, we had, you know, we were kind of dumbfounded at the beginning too when we were first trying to compare them. So we, what we want to be able to show the residents is a yes vote. What does a yes vote mean? And what does a no vote mean? And so like the pros and cons here for a yes vote, um, less than, so less units per acre. In total for the project, it would be 60 less units, um, allowed to be built. Less traffic impact, but we don't, you know, I mean, it's 60 less units, but it's something.
It's still gonna be, yeah, no matter which option they go with, there'll be an impact to traffic.
Yeah, for sure.
It's just, it's just less. About a, about a fourth, last, fifth, last, um, yeah.
Yeah. And then we mentioned before, so the town has more input into the project, um, you know, the oversight, the decisions. And then three-bedroom units, I mean, it's a minimal amount of them, but there's so much focus right now on the schools and their, you know, in Norfolk, Norfolk Public Schools are pretty, they're at capacity. So three-bedroom units most likely, based on, you know, planning data would, may lead to a few more families. I don't know exactly how many that could happen with two bedrooms as well, but generally speaking, from the planning data that we've seen, it's usually the three bedrooms that have families. And then we would be, this is something that we, uh, just learned about actually before this meeting, but we also would be, we are eligible because we're now compliant and, what's the exact word? Compliant, but we are designated. Now as an MBTA compliant community. So we are eligible for MBTA Communities Catalyst Grant Fund, Funds now. And this would just be, you know, adding this to that. We don't know exactly how it all works yet, we have, Rich has tons of information. We don't know exactly how it all works, but this would be one more project that would be, you know, helping us to be able to get grant money into town for things that, you know, could be sewer, it could be water, it could be anything, um, that is noted in the big document that, that Rich has, that explains what we could get funds for. So we thought that was worth noting. And then the cons, of course, the 10% for the affordable is, it's only 14 units that are added to the affordable housing inventory totals. That is, I mean, there's, there's pros, there's so many pros and cons for this, but that one was one that I thought would stand out to most people. And if you guys have any others that you want me to add, you think about it, and we can add it afterwards.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, the thing is, is like, I don't know how you, I mean, yes, it's a con, it's, it's not a. It just stays status quo, I guess is probably the best way to put it. It's more neutral, it's like, we're staying status quo, we're not, we're not, we're not. Yeah, it's not this, if it is a 40B and we have the 200 units, well, that.
Moves the needle.
Yeah, I mean, it, that is sort of a pro, that it, it moves the needle that much forward.
At the expense of.
At the expense of all these other things.
Yes.
So it's like, so this one keeps us just net neutral. So it's, maybe it, I just don't know if it's fair to call it a con.
I think it's a con by comparison, you know, so if we're looking at the two. So maybe, yeah, and we can, yeah, that's a good point, though.
Sue's got her hand up, you wanna grab the microphone?
Well, hold on.
We have a couple more slides, too, too.
Yeah.
So.
Just one more, Sue. And then the next one, so a no vote, um, the developer, so by the way, I don't know if I mentioned this before, the developer has not agreed that they will choose MBTA zoning. This would be to be able to give them that option to have less density in that area. They're still going to choose whatever they're going to choose, most likely based on their financial analyses. But, um, this would be, so a no vote means that the developer has, you know, the option, they will be continuing most likely with a 40B. And so all of the pros in that case, like I mentioned before, all the 200 rental units count towards our affordable housing inventory totals, even though the majority of them will actually be market rate. It's just, I guess, a 40B perk, we'll call it. But if they're, if they're rental units, 100% of them count towards our number. The cons, there are plenty of those as well, higher density, no limit on dwelling units per acre. Right now, as I said, it's 27, but, you know, if they came up with a new design, it could be a different amount, it could be higher. Higher chance of the traffic impact with 60 more units, town has less input into the project, and the three bedrooms, of course, are.
Has a potential to impact schools.
Yeah.
Yep.
But schools would be impacted, either way, if you run the numbers on no three bedrooms and mixture 1, 2, that's still, with 160 units, you're still looking at.
140.
There's gonna be some impact.
20, 30, 40, as opposed to, you know, throw numbers out in the air, but like 40, 50, 60. No, the three-bedroom unit under MBTA zoning.
There's nothing preventing them that I've ever seen.
No, there isn't preventing them.
But I, there isn't any preventing, but from a, I bet you, I, I, I would imagine that their financials would say, we'd rather have more, more smaller units. But that's up to them.
Yep. What were you gonna say there?
I'll keep, I'll keep, wait.
You can go. That's it, that's it, that's the last line.
Thank you.
All right, Sue, you did have question, comment? Or both?
Sounds like.
Really light, huh?
Hi, Sue Jacobson, the Affordable Housing Director. I agree with you, Chad, I think we need to find, uh, neutral may be a better word than, uh, con for the 14 units versus the 200 units. Because for many people, I think that it, and I've said this before, you know, we need to try to take the best project. This isn't a great project, you know, no matter how you slice it for folks, right?
Right.
But for folks, I think, that are being impacted by this project, they may not see that as a con at all because it does allow 60 units to come off the table, which is a huge number of units if the developer goes to this, in this direction. So I just think we need to tweak, tweak that, that wording.
Yep, yeah, this is our first draft, as, as Melissa said, this is our first draft of this. We wanted to, to present this tonight at our public hearing. We will then take, we wanna, we wanna hear from you all and your feedback because we will then use this, we have an advisory meeting tomorrow to go through this as well. And then, and then we will take some of these slides or all these slides to also, to our town meeting as well. So we have time. Yep, yeah, microphone. So name and address and.
Sean McGrath, 57 Everett Street.
Thank you.
I guess, what would make the developer want to choose that? Like if they can make more building, I, if we're gonna go through all that work, what's the chances that they actually say, hey, well, we'll, we want to build 60 less units, I guess? Is my question.
Hope.
The affordable, no, the affordable, though, I mean, it's such a, it's a totally different percent. MBTA is only 10% affordable that they have to build.
So the, the developer makes more profit off each unit?
Yeah.
And that would offset the 60 less units they can build?
So go back to the, there was one slide there, um, that one. So under 40B, the affordable is 25%, whereas MBTA zoning is 10%. So there's a, there's an economic shift there. So their, the units drop, but the affordability ratio drops as well.
So they're gonna essentially, so think about that, 25% of 200, they're gonna, they're not making a lot of money on 50 of them, right? Or potentially losing some money versus 14.
And the other, I guess, the larger point about it was that when they first came in to talk about the concept of this project, is that they felt that there was a market in the one and two bedroom was where they felt the market was. But the underlying zoning that this all came out of didn't have the density to make it scalable rental. So like, that was kind of, that was the starting point with all this, that under the existing zoning that's there, which is the multifamily in the area, that was the starting point that, you know, and then when the inclusionary got layered on top of it, which then took density away and then increased the amount of affordable, that really blew out the, the financial viability of it, which then shifted this thing, this current direction. So the thought is that, like Melissa said, that even though it's less, it would meet a strong need, at least from the market, to be able to, to build it and lease it up. So that, that was the.
The inclusionary bylaw, in case you're not familiar, so we have, you know, we have a certain percentage in town that we built, even in a traditional neighborhood, if we were to build a subdivision, 10% of them have to be affordable. And so with the inclusionary bylaw change, that was four years ago now, I think it was 2021. It was a very well-intentioned citizens petition. And logically, if you would think, if you, what it is, is basically, if you have 1 to 12, 1 to 12 right now.
I think it's 6 to 12.
6 to 12.
6 to 12.
So, yeah, 6 to 12, right, because you can't have a fraction of a, of a unit. So 6 to 12, and then 13 to 19, and then 19 plus. With each one of those, the percentage goes up, so it starts at 10%, goes to 15, and then goes to 20. So the higher that goes, the profit margin goes like this. So that's pushing people towards 40Bs to make money, which is, you know, when you just, if you put it in a spreadsheet, it makes perfect sense if you look at the financials, because that's typically how they're making business decisions.
Yep, go ahead, yep.
Tom Martin, 42 Everett Street. The question I have is the other project, that's on the same site, falls in the Overlay District now?
Yes.
So he can only have 18 units per acre?
Well, he.
Well, he has a, he could do the MBTA if he chose, but he does have a project, a 40B project eligibility letter, so he, he might come in under MBTA, or he might go.
But I thought if he fell in the Overlay District, right, he has to stay in the.
No, no, no.
They, they.
It'll, the, the 40B overrides even the MB, MBTA Overlay District. It overrides all local zoning, so.
It's a good question, though, yeah, it's, it's, the, they can do 40B anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's, that's their purview.
Just having that eligibility letter, though, does he, I mean, I haven't had conversations with him since I think he came to our meeting months ago now, but is he going to go down the 40B path? Or, because MBTA.
No, he's still, he's still actually, he's still looking at evaluation. He, he could end up very well be scaling his down as well.
He would be down to like 30 units.
30, whatever, it's 38 units, I think, or something like that?
Right, he currently has 55?
59.
59.
Yeah.
You only have 18 per acre, I don't think he has two acres.
He does.
Yeah.
It's actually, it's two different parcels, right?
Just two different parcels.
Two parcels, yeah.
Yeah, but somebody overlay falls in the other, in the other project.
So, um, let me go, no, it's not in this one. Let me, uh, actually. No, it's a fair point, let me switch over so I can show you.
Yeah, he, he's still evaluating his, our understanding is he's evaluating his options.
No, but to his point, so I think.
Yeah, that's a good picture.
See the.
The green line?
The green line. This piece down here is actually Nathaniel's. Okay? What? What's up?
That triangle.
It's not easy for everybody in the audience to see. The gray piece.
No.
No, below the gray piece, there's a triangle.
Yeah.
Like a green triangle.
Like a gr, kind of a green tr, greenish triangle.
Yeah. Is that where all the dirt is now?
No. No, it's not. So what I'm trying to tell you, essentially tell you that the assessor maps have been wrong since 1979. For these two properties, okay? Fortunately enough, the assessors that are in that office today are working with me to get this corrected. So what you see on the assessor maps does not reflect what Nate owns. What he owns is this, um, those two pieces, which in total are two acres. So he has two acres, which is 38. To answer your question.
And Pondville Crossing doesn't cross over that triangle?
Pondville Crossing, no. This green line, well, this green is part of their property site, and this other, the rest of it, the purple. What is what?
Pondville, Pondville Crossing actually grabs the right third of that gray piece.
Yeah, they own this piece too, correct, yep.
Yep.
They own 8 Hill Street. That's part of those, which is already in the district, so.
What hasn't been mentioned is the, uh, railroad track property, future Greenway is not part of the 40B, or, sorry, is not part of the.
Not part of the MBTA Overlay District. Not part of the MBTA overlay district.
Overlay.
Correct.
What does that mean? What could it be?
Well, it keeps, that's kind of the defining line of where the development can be in the...
Can't build that then.
Right, in the MBTA.
If it was under MBTA.
They'll be able to use the area to count densit, every unit count, but not actually build it in that, so it's a defining boundary.
Let's see. Grab microphone.
Hello?
Yep.
Um, from a historical point of view...
Name and address. I know, we know who we are, but just for...
Sorry. Elizabeth Whitney, 26 Valley Street, Pondville.
Thank you.
In case you... Um, historical locations, are they impacted? Are they protected? Can they be destroyed because of 40B? Because, remember, I wrote a book.
I do.
I know.
If it, if it's a registered historical...
Well, for example, the stone abutments, um, over which was the railroad bridge...
Right.
On Hill Street.
So...
Those abutments are on the Mass Historical Register.
Oh.
Yeah.
Interesting. So interesting note, side note on that in the big picture, the Mediacoma Greenway will impact those rail abutments. However, as part of the Mediacoma Greenway is to repurpose them as part of the project. So the 40B is really gonna impact the rail abutments, but the Mediacoma Greenway will.
So in other words, we'll see them on 115 leading down to Norfolk Center as a new stone wall? Is that what you mean? In other words, they will be removed?
We don't know yet. We gotta do...
Which is horrible.
What's that?
In case you're wondering.
It's horrible.
Removing the stone abutments on Hill Street.
It's horrible?
It's a safety hazard. You can't go down the street. Two cars.
Well, I realize that, but I am living proof that one car can go up and down at times.
Or at least, uh, well, just, well, I'll focus, just now for right, for this discussion, they're not impacting the rail abutments. Cause, well, particularly with the MBTA, it's like, they're, it's outside it, but they weren't...
That'll be a future discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah. For tonight, that's not part of the discussion.
It's more of a project, it's, yeah.
Right. But you know what, to that point, though, about, um, the old railroad area that was part of, we did send a letter to, um, Mass Housing noting all of our concerns that we worked on collectively, that we heard from residents that sent in letters.
Oh, we wrote the letters, yeah.
Yes. Um, so we did send that in and I know, at least in my portion, I had photos of like my car trying to go through that area. I was like, I had never been up there before. I had no reason to be on Hill Street before at that end. And, uh, I was like, oh my gosh, I can't believe it's this tiny. You know, it's obviously not very safe and it can't really support much more traffic. So we did note that in our letter to the, to Mass Housing.
And 40B can't change that? 40B cannot affect those stuffs?
They...
Well, they have to file with Mass Historic. They do. But they're not proposing to touch those, that's, I just wanna make it clear, they're not proposing to touch them as part of their development. If you, if that's all you know...
But traffic study, traffic study might dictate that, that they end up having to make corrections to the road to...
Well, I suppose.
Support the project.
All right. But they're not proposing to touch them. If it dictates in that regard, but...
Yeah, Eric brings up a good point if, if, cause we did file all of our concerns and if...
Traffic was one of them.
If, if the state comes back from a traffic standpoint and says, well, we need to widen that, then, then it could be impacted.
So that won't be a state.
That wouldn't...
That won't be a state, though. That'd be a local concern, but that's a local roadway. That's not, that's not state jurisdiction, though.
True, true.
Okay?
Yeah.
All I'm saying, just at initially, they're not proposing to alter the, those abutments with the 40B project.
Okay.
Uh, Dan Casimir, 48 Everett Street. Um, I think two of the points that we brought up in our letter relative to this whole parcel planning were, was the Greenway and how that would impact Pondville Crossing. Um, but one step before that is we had some questions about the railroad easement itself and whether the railroad itself is, it, it's part of a federal, previously part of a federal rail, railroad system that we believe needs to be, you know, released in order to be developed on. And there's some legal sort of research to do on that. But the, the Greenway we brought up in our letter as an important topic is because the, the proposal, the site plan proposal that we saw for Pondville Crossing clearly uses, you know, all of that railroad slash Greenway space in order to meet its density requirements. So I think, Melissa, when you look at your chart of 200 versus 160, we, we would think in reality, those, those numbers are 30 or 40% higher than they actually could be just based on the area, which, you know, we, we hope goes, we, we mostly hope goes to the, to the Greenway.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, I have another question, I guess, um, relative to the comments. So we did have, we do have a comment letter that we saw for Pondville Station, but we, we would like to request the, a copy of the letter as well that was sent for Pondville Crossing, um, just so we can have that as sort of a, um, you know, another piece of information for, for, for the neighborhood group.
Yeah.
Yep. Absolutely. We can do that.
Yeah.
And then my only question or sort of comment on, um, the MBTA district is, and I wasn't in town as part of that original decision, but as a, as a transit-oriented, um, development, right, was, what were, what were the conversations that were had relative to that, to these, these overlays becoming inappropriate, you know, location for an area that clearly provides no access to public transit?
So there is...
There's access for Foxborough and Norfolk, it's just not what you and I would consider next to a train station.
It's not adjacent to a, it's not like town center where there was, was another, which is another overlay district in MBTA.
Yeah, the, the rules did allow us to have, we had to have our central location and it had to be a certain size or ratio, but they allowed it, and, and they allowed one area that was not part of that central location, so it was disjointed. And there was a, a formula there and a ratio of how big they could be. Uh, but like, like Gary said, it, it does still have access to some features, some...
So I guess the, my, my question's relative to...
Yep, we can...
Um, the, the overlay, the potential overlay addition or reassignment, however you're gonna call it, is like, wouldn't, wouldn't it be a good suggestion to reconsider the overlay district in an, in an entirely different area of the town that does provide more proximity to public transit? And I know that doesn't necessarily make our case for the 40B, like, you know, losing the 40B on that site, but, you know, I think most of the neighborhood has, you know, that said that they don't want anything there, which, you know, is, is likely not the, the result of this process, but would that be an option that the, that the town would consider?
Well, wouldn't be something that we can consider for, for the town meeting, um, this, this coming town meeting. Uh, it's just too tight of a timeframe. This situation was one where, you know, we looked at this and we're like, 200 units, 40B, that's just a lot to take in. And, and so we were trying to find a way to mitigate that to some extent. And because we already had that 40B overlay district nearby, we can add on to it at a minimal amount. Cause if we start adding a lot or ta, if we take away, we gotta rerun all the calc's and that's a whole different topic, which we can't get into. It's, it's just the amount of time.
Not, not presently before.
Yeah.
The, I will say, though, part of the other decision point of including this area, um, well, one was four and six Hill Street was potentially considered a 40B. Um, and then the 3.5 acre parcel that's right here. That developer had said, you know, under your inclusionary bylaw, it's, again, another uneconomic situation for me and you, there needs to be something. And by way of the MBTA zoning, it allowed him to go to 10%, which is, which was, which was the old inclusionary bylaw requirement without getting into the, going back and changing the whole inclusionary bylaw. However, as I say that, we are gonna be working to go back because the story remains the same. And while it was, it thought maybe, all right, well, we increase it, we'll get more, we'll get more. Well, what, what's, it's a coupling effect and quite frankly, the coupling effect, it's uneconomic, coupled with the fact that we have low-density residential districts with large frontages, dead-end streets that are really urban lengths. So property density is all plain, it's all funneling into the 40B path. So we need to make strategic decisions long-term to really look at all that again. And that's part of what we're doing. It's not part of this today, but we definitely are because we're gonna be on, we're not gonna be on a sustainable path because as these farm properties start to change and people move along, there's gonna be more economic pressure. It's not gonna get better. And we need to, we need to start to go that way seriously, otherwise we're not in a great path. And so...
Yeah, well...
I know it's a long-winded answer.
Yeah, no, no, I, I think the only, yeah, the, the one thing is, is, I mean, there's, there's obviously no timeline to, to make, to, to reach our 10%, you know?
Right.
Uh, margin. Um, I think generally there's the feeling from, I'm, I'm sort of running, you know, the neighborhood group here and, and sort of speaking on behalf of most of the residents, but that we understand that this land is developable into a, likely a, a multifamily development. However, something that is as dense and as, you know, uh, large and as kind of powerful as this building or as these buildings have been proposed, both, both station and crossing, it, it, it just doesn't, it, you know, that's, it just doesn't work for, for the, for the town. It certainly doesn't work for the neighborhood. So I, I think we appreciate the look at the MB, MBTA overlay as a potential way to sort of control the, 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 the density. Um, and I do think that that density ultimately, when you, when you sort of shake out, um, site access, traffic issues, um, environmental impact, um, that is gonna go down significantly. So I don't even, you know, the 14 is, is likely a pipe dream. So I would say that, you know, it's neutral, as, as Sue said, um, but that was it, so...
Okay. No, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? Yep.
Hello?
Yes. Name, address?
Bonnie McLaughlin. Uh, I live at 23 Campbell Street. I'm also a homeowner at Knight Hill Street. Um, so I'm obviously very, very interested in this. And I will say, from what I've learned from watching the prior, thank you, Melissa, posting the 324 meeting discussion and, uh, nice presentation, I very much understand what this particular effort is for the warrants and I appreciate the town sending this forth in, you know, hopes of potentially mitigating a little bit of the volume that we have up there. So I am in support of this, um, based on, uh, thank you very much for all that information that you provided. I hope it does pass, um, as a small measure that we might have in our favor to help, um, you know, reduce it even a tiny bit. Um, obviously huge concerns on a lot of other different issues that I'm sure will have, I hope, opportunities for further discussion and examination of, but in terms of the, um, getting the MBTA overlay, I, I will say that I, I support it and I'll promote it amongst my town folk and try and explain what that angle is all about. That said, in terms of the, the units, I did have one question. Um, I know, uh, we had submitted, our town council had submitted to DOT, um, concerns about approving this, um, project where the, it was overlapping the railway. Um, and was, because that does have a potential to impact, I guess, the developable, developable acreage, which could potentially impact the number of units as well. Have we, did we get any response to that?
Response from, what was, what was, from the state? You mean, or?
From the state.
Are we expecting a response from DOT on that?
From DOT about the letter expressing the concerns about how the, the projected plan was actually overlapping the Greenway?
No, because I think, no.
It was to EO HLC and not to DOT, right?
So the, the letter that the town submitted to Mast dot, to the secretary, um...
Tibbetts, not...
Tibbetts. The developer is aware of the letter and had responded back that they are gonna incorporate, which we haven't seen at all, but incorporate the Greenway and not build within the Greenway because they understand, they know that they need the secretary to sign off to build in the Greenway. So I, so I don't think we need to respond yet because they're, they've been put on notice essentially. And so has the building commissioner as well, so it's laid in place already, I guess I'd say.
So what you're saying is we had, didn't get a response from the, from the state, but we did get a response from the developer that...
We did get a response from the developer.
That he has said, well, we're not gonna, we're not gonna develop in the Greenway.
Yes, yes.
Because the six, the six-floor unit was in that section and it's gone, they can't build out there.
So now in terms of what, what it may be redesigned, I've no idea, but they, they took the message and they acknowledged it, so...
The developer did.
The developer did, yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Yep. Any other comments? Any? Microphone? Yep.
One other issue. Um, Justin sent a letter to Kate Miller.
Mm-hmm.
And if you have the letter?
I don't have it in front of me, but, um, can you give me a, what, what was the premise of the letter?
Fine.
What was the overview of the, the summary? What, you said Justin's...
Pondville Station, four, six Hill Street.
Yep.
Site elderly, elderly response.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I got you. Yep.
At the end, he says, finally, the town is concerned about the potential...
Microphone.
...impact of the existing warehouse.
Yep.
He uses the site, requests that the avenue provide an environmental assessment. If the town is concerned about it, why are we waiting?
To say, what was, what was the last comment again?
Environmental assessment.
He provided environmental assessment prior to commencing construction of the project. If the town is concerned about it today, which is in writing, why haven't we done something?
Wouldn't that be on the...
That's on the... That's the developer to do that.
That's the developer, owner, property owner, not the town.
This is a letter from Justin to Kate Miller on town paperwork.
I understand.
And he states on the town paperwork that he is concerned about the bi, environmental impact on the property.
Right.
Right.
So why don't we have somebody from the town go out and inspect the property and make sure everything's clean?
So we don't have the professional people on staff, nor will we, it's, it's on the property owner to do it. It's, it's an owner responsibility, property owner, not the town. Now, the town can, um...
Why don't we have somebody go out and check all the permits that he, that he's required, that he's fallen on?
Well, that would be part of the, that would be part of the process. I mean, we're just not there yet.
That could be two years from now.
That's right. Yeah.
So for two years from now, we can have oil on the ground, gasoline on the ground?
Well, that would be part of the, that would be part of the process. I mean, we're just not there yet.
Could be two years from now.
That's right. Yeah.
So for two years from now, we can have oil on the ground, gasoline on the ground?
Yeah, I mean.
They might have to remediate if it's found during environmental.
Stop remediation now if we, if we find it's a problem.
Well, but we wouldn't remediate it.
No, we wouldn't, but he would have to.
Right, but he, yeah, but it's, we just wouldn't start.
That's a situation, I understand that.
So for, yeah, so we're going down, so first it's private piece of property. We have to have probable cause to go on the property to do that. But you just don't, the town doesn't have the authority to just go on the town and start testing and then find things for somebody. So we put them on notice that these are the things they need to look at. And through the permitting process, they're going to have to provide that, yes, we looked at it. It's either an issue or not an issue. If it's an issue, how are we going to remediate it? The, the town doesn't.
I understand. But I'm just saying, I mean, what is outside storage permit is probably in violation?
His out, his what permit?
Outside storage.
Um, there's no.
This is the other property, right?
You're talking about the other property. You're not talking about.
Are you talking about Pondville Station?
Yeah, Station.
Yeah, that's the other. Yeah, we're tonight, this is the overlay district for Pondville Crossing. So I mean, I, I know what you're saying.
We can't get into this.
We really shouldn't. It's not, it's not part of the, it's not part of the scope of that public hearing right now. But I, I understand what you're saying. And we have, as a town, we have talked to him about that. Yeah. Yep. Yep. You're welcome. Any other questions, comments? Anyone on Zoom? I don't see any hands raised. Betsy, do you see any? Okay. Okay. Lang, so thank you, Melissa, for putting those slides together. Be very helpful over the next month as we have to present this to other groups.
And this is already on the town meeting warrant.
It is.
For May 14.
Yep.
Article 34.
So this is article 34 and it just.
And I did.
Yes, thank you. You did change the graphic because it was just so hard to read. Thank you, especially.
Not that it's awesome, but it's, it's.
It's, it's definitely better and will be easier to read. I'm seeing it in black and white and I can actually understand it in black and white, which is good. And so the.
I'm sorry.
Article 34 really just has a couple of changes. One is the date and the acreage and the map.
Correct.
Now, what were you going to say, Rich?
I was going to say, if you decide to vote or you want to vote the one like you had previously done, because that's on that same.
Yeah, on the same document.
Document, yeah.
So, yeah, go ahead, Betsy. Grab the microphone. Yep, we're still in a public hearing. So yeah, feel free. As long as it's green.
The green button is on Elizabeth Whitney, 26 Valley Street, Pondville.
Yes.
Relative to, if it gets to be a 40B, relative to buildings, relative to building size, building height, buildings and the density of the buildings built. Does a 40B developer follow whose rules? Nor for?
Not ours.
Not, not the towns.
So they could build a 40B project with huge and high buildings, for example, 84 feet high, which is two Pondville Medical Centers, one right on top of the other. I've been trying to imagine what it's like to be living in the high-rise district of Pondville. Because I've been there for 42 years and it ain't like this. So I'm thinking that what I have heard about the density, the height and the bigness, I've looked up projects that the developer has really gone to town with in surrounding areas all over the state. I just can't imagine seeing it in what was once called the Little Hamlet of Pondville. So very unsophisticated words, as I say, like too big, too high, too dense. Yep, residential, that's good. But we've been residential down there since 2013, when it was unheard of. Because everywhere in the state of Massachusetts was commercial first. And I think Pondville was the last one that said, okay, and they did vote residential by special permit. Thank God. So the way I look at things, my little Pondville has already reached quite a lot of saturation. And the bigness, here comes the city and it makes me really sad. I love Pondville for the rest of my life. I will be in the red house that was built in 1745. I wasn't, but it was. And I will always love Pondville and I will always try to take care of it. Thank you. And I'm not meaning to be dramatic. I'm quite serious. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Green light that I.
Yeah, I, I think the, the one thing that's a good point and on that, I don't, you don't have to flip to it, but on that chart, we did show that if, if it's a 40B, it does not come to the North Fork Planning Board for any review and it doesn't follow our zoning bylaws. And if it, if it's 40B, it's, it really, they can skirt all that and it's just the ZBA. And there's limited purview of what they have to, to provide oversight on. So, yeah.
Neither are great options. We know, we know that, especially for Pondville.
So, and we don't know, we're just trying to provide another vehicle, an option for them to do this. You know, obviously they own the land, they can develop it really how they see fit, you know, to make their, whatever they try to choose to do economically to see fit. And we're trying to provide another option with the MBTA overlay that would reduce some of the density. Still dense. Like, it's still dense. But if it, if they do choose the MBTA overlay, then, then we have a partnership with them where we can work with them together. And, and hopefully build a, a better product. If it's 40B, it's, they kind of can do a lot on their own. So, questions, comments, anything additional? Sue, you have any final words of wisdom, thoughts?
No, but it's another tool.
Yep.
You know, we don't, we, I'll say it again, we don't race to 10%. Let's try to make it the best project we can with what we've been, with what we've been given.
Well said. Yeah, that, that's very true. It's, you know, it's another tool. And if, if they choose that route, then we can work together on a, on a really good project. Anything else before we close?
I've got a question. Rich, when we voted for the MBTA overlay previous, there was amended voting requirement, right? It was just a majority to pass. So now that this is, it's already in effect, are we under the, the typical rules of two thirds approval to?
No, I think it was still under the, I'll, I'll check with council. I think it's still a majority.
To alter or to?
For this modification.
I think we need to know that. Except which threshold we need to meet.
Yeah, I will confer.
Good point.
I'm going to go 99%. It's a majority vote, but I'll check for the 1%.
Sorry. I think it will be important though, to have folks from Pondville there at town meeting to talk about, you know, your just having 60 units less, if that's how you feel, that would be better. Because when you're looking at, the reason I had the 200, the, um, the affordability factor as a con, which I can change to neutral, but is because I know when you talk to people in town, they're like, wait, so we can just do this one project and we can be done with 40Bs without, like Sue said, we don't have to, we don't have to race to the finish line. So we do have some numbers that we're pulling up to see, you know, how, how we're doing now and what we have in process for the affordability. What percentage will be, will we be at with our, you know, what we have in the pipeline now? So that we can have that data ready for town meeting for people as well. So maybe that will, we don't have the data completely fleshed out yet, but maybe that would make people feel more comfortable to not have to go with the 200 unit.
I really think they're, they're all neutral. You know, there's, there's really no pros for the town on this.
Not for the town. It's just, yeah.
So that list of pros could, could really, there could be a completely neutral list, really, you know?
Yeah, comparison of one versus the other. I guess they're not even pros and cons. Just comparison.
Sue, can you grab a microphone?
Yep.
So Melissa, Sue Jacobson, Affordable Housing Director, Melissa just brought up a point of where some folks think, okay, we do this one project and we get to 10%. But what people don't understand, and Rich and I have had conversation about this, is let's say that this goes the 40B route. The day that the application is approved, it's stamped by our town clerk and that starts the clock. Whatever's not built within a year, those units fall off of our subsidized housing inventory. This is a very large project. We know it's going to take more than a year. So while we may be at 10% for the first year, once that year hits, whatever units aren't built, fall off of our subsidized housing inventory. So it's, we're really, you know, if, if this project takes, let's say, four years, I, I was updating our SHI today, our subsidized housing inventory. And I'll give you an example, the enclave down off of Village Green Avery Way, 40 townhomes, 20 affordable units, 20 townhomes, 40 units, 10 affordable units. They came before the zoning board of appeals in 2017 and I sold the last affordable unit in December of 2024.
Wow.
So it, it's a lengthy time and we would be outside of our 10% once those units fall off of the SHI. So it, it's not, it's not going to solve our problem for, forever. It's a short term, a short term solve.
Yeah, a good way to put it.
Will you be speaking at town meeting?
Yes.
Sue is always there. Don't worry. Yeah, it's very, it's such a nuanced thing, you know, when she says fall off the list, it's like we get credit for it as an advance, if you will. Then, you know, as soon as it's not built, then it goes back to, okay, well, we need to go by occupancy permits. And one at a time, you're trekking back up to that 200.
Okay. Any additional comments?
I'll just comment that I'm a cynic here. I, I don't, I can't see a developer going with the MBTA overlay, but I have to hope I'm wrong. And our job is to nudge developers into paths that are better for the town. And this is, this is the only feasible thing at this point.
That's right. I mean, neither, I think we're all, neither situation is ideal. We're just trying to provide another option.
Just mitigate some risk.
That might be.
I mean, Rentham's proposing at Everett Vine, a 40B. So I mean, we're, that's Rentham. They have their own package in the venture right now, obviously, with that decision, but.
Yep.
A lot going on over there.
Okay. All right. I'd like to entertain a motion. We, we're going to have to close this. We can vote.
Yep.
So I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the proposed zoning bylaw amendment for the MB, revised MBTA overlay.
Moved.
Have a second?
Just keep it going. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. So public meeting, meeting is closed. We have a article here. I don't see any changes. Anybody? Changes?
To the one that we just talked about?
Yeah, to article 34. I mean, it's.
That looks good.
Any changes to what?
As printed, not as advertised.
Right.
Updated map.
Yes, as, as, as.
As in that.
Yep.
And. Updated 428.
Yep.
4825, sir.
The 48, yep. Okay. So I would like to entertain a motion to approve article 34 as written in document 4.8.25 executed warrant zoning bylaw edits.
So moved.
All those in favor? Oh, no, I need a second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Article 34 has been passed and sent on to town meeting. Okay. I just want to say thank you all for staying here through several town, for, through several public hearings before we got to this. You're welcome to stay.
And engaging, right? Community engagement is a huge part of this.
50% benchmark for the meeting or is that 30%?
It was just good. It was just.
As far as how much more you guys have.
Oh, oh, how much more? We're almost done.
We're almost done, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're just down to a couple of new business items. So yeah, we're, we're past the 50% mark. Yeah, yeah. Yep. Okay. So we've got some meeting minutes to approve. We had three meetings in March.
Yeah, we did.
Yep.
Wow. We're like overachievers.
I, in 2024, we did 92 hours of meetings and at this rate, we're going to hit like 110.
So what's crazy is that you calculated that and kept track of that?
YouTube. I just ran a script to calculate the YouTube minutes and I subtracted like five minutes for each YouTube video.
That means we were here even longer than that because.
Yeah, we were here longer. I'm just saying.
Wow, we're putting in the work apparently. All right. Okay. Okay. Melissa, we got some.
Yes.
Meeting minutes?
Mm-hmm. One sec. Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the planning board meeting on March 11th, 2025.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Wait, second.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself.
Ready to go, Chad?
It's been a while, man. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
All right. I would like to make a motion to approve the planning board meeting minutes from March 18th, 2025.
Do we have?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Last one. I would like to make a motion to approve the planning board meeting minutes from March 24th, 2025.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Meeting minutes. Check. Next item is the RFP for engineering consulting services. Rich?
So I put together an RFP for consulting engineering services, which we would, it would be for the planning board, zoning board of appeals. And then instances where there was something before the conservation commission, that would be jurisdictional, that they would provide peer review services for the conservation. So one consultant would look at all three aspects of the permitting process.
Is that being done now?
It is being done now, but we, we haven't done an RFP in some time. So we need to
Okay.
Put it out. This will be for a three-year time span. Essentially, I'm just letting you know, going to put it out. What I, I'm asking, and you don't, don't need to decide tonight, but to have, it would include two reps from the planning board, two reps from the zoning board. They would go through the proposals, evaluate them, interview whoever would be selected, and then make recommendations, you know, to the planning board and zoning board to then vote whoever was chosen in the end. I did let, you know, Beto already know, so it's not a surprise to them. So I let them know. It was something that was identified that, that we should do somewhere.
Bye. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's what we're doing. So you don't have to choose tonight, but in terms of two reps.
Timeframe wise?
May 22nd, when the proposals will be due. So.
Do you have an estimated number of returns or you had people?
I have no idea. I put it out there and stuff.
So you said May 22nd when they're due. So when do you plan to advertise this?
I'm going to advertise it probably start next week.
Okay. So if we have comments, we should get them back to you soon.
On the RFP?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
This week. So if we have comments
Yeah.
On the RFP, we should get, return those to you this week. Okay.
I have to imagine this is pretty standardized.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at them like, mm, you know.
It is, it's pretty standardized, yes.
Okay. No, that's good.
And then.
Keeps everybody on their toes.
Yep. And then we did, between Betsy and myself, put together a an update to your filing fees.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that, that will, additionally, that'll be something, we, we need to advertise it. So we're not proposing, well, so you can review it, not necessarily as time-sensitive, so if you wanted to kind of noodle on it, and we can discuss it at the May meeting and then advertise in June, that's fine, but.
Okay.
What we do is establish fees for ADUs, and sign permits too, because we never actually did a sign.
Right.
We were gonna give some freebies for the sign at first.
Yeah, we did.
We did for the first year.
Freebies have been out, and we haven't had.
A couple. We did two.
We had what, three?
Two.
We did two for the, two for the Dunks.
Oh, I keep thinking.
And one for the town.
Carvana.
For the fire station.
And one for Carvana.
So four.
Yeah. See a lot of those flag signs out, maybe we crack down on those.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Yeah. So we include those.
So can, so as far as preliminary plans, you went from 2,500 up to 4,000. What's the, I guess, can you give us some, I guess?
Regis Digest, or?
Yeah, just like a little bit of explanation on why. I'm sure these, these are all justified in to cover costs and so forth, but, so why on preliminary plans, we almost, not quite, but almost doubled the cost?
So the review fee.
That's the review.
Yeah, the review fee.
Review fee, the way we are working it now is we get a quote from BETA.
Gotcha.
And it's probably more than, usually around $4,000. So that way there, you know.
And the last time we updated this was six years ago.
Yeah.
So a little bit of inflation in there.
Yeah.
In six years, pre-COVID.
I don't think we touched that six years ago.
No, actually, we didn't touch that.
So it's even older.
That's been.
So it's even older than that, and these are all, a lot of these are pre-COVID prices.
Yeah. It looks like the last update, which I don't know what was included in that, was 2019.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, that was, the only thing that was updated on that was adding the advertising fee.
I remember that, I was here on the board. I think I was.
It's been that long?
Yes, I have been here that long, yes. That was, I think I had just joined the board then, that May of 19.
Because prior to that, the advertising fee was coming out of the town's filing fee.
Oh.
Yeah.
That adds up.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we were really in the red.
Okay, so review fee, we're raising.
Yeah.
Just because the costs have gone up significantly. Gotcha, okay.
We lowered the threshold from five to three on the preliminary plan, but.
Application fee, also lowered the threshold from five to three, and the fee doubled. Review fee, for, this is subdivisions, review fee went from 3,000 to 5,000, again, same.
Same.
Every, you know. Then get down to D, site plan approvals, review fee also went up, so again, same, same argument, same.
Yeah.
Page four.
So new, new is?
Some language.
Page five.
Page five.
Oh, the EVs.
Is the ADU, okay, so ADU, site plan, application fee is 500.
And EV.
And then the EV site application fee is 500?
Per unit?
What's that?
The site plan application fee per unit, is that?
Each charger.
Each, for each charging station, it's $500?
Yep.
For a site plan review, for one?
Yeah.
There's a lot of conduit. I'm just, I'm.
Okay, I just.
So what, what was the rationale on that, when your subdivision site plan is, application fee's only $300?
Is that for the, for the EV?
Well, for both, ADU and EV, so you gotta, so be, like, yeah, site plan, is it, site plan application fee.
For ADU?
No, I'm just looking at, just for a plan, oh, that's a plan, okay, never mind, subdivision $600. Okay, never mind, all right, I, I'm catching up.
Okay.
And then site plan approvals is 750, okay, okay. So an ADU is 500.
Yeah.
And then electric, it's 500 per unit.
What if they come to us with a site plan for five of them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
2,500 dollars.
Seriously?
Yeah.
What do you have against them?
The definitive subdivision is $200, it's 2,000 plus 200 per unit.
Yeah.
Well, EVs.
EVs. You're talking about the EVs, right?
So for the EV thing, though, right?
They'll lower it.
Should we set a max?
But, but wouldn't that lend itself to some sort of sliding scale, where it's like, like the, the initial work, it's not like you're doing the same exact amount of work unit to unit for reviewing this thing, right? There's just, if, if you get 10 of them, if there's a bank of 10.
Yeah.
That work is significantly less per unit, right, than like the first one or two.
On the first, yeah, work is on the first unit, yeah.
Kind of like on a subdivision, it's initial 2,000, then $200 for each lot.
I'm not saying give it away, it's just like, to Melissa's point, 500 a unit is.
When they might all be the same.
Yeah, could, could be cost prohibitive for.
Commercial.
A restaurant looking to put in EV chargers.
No, that's, if it's commercial, we're talking about, yeah, I see what you're, it's a commercial enterprise.
No, it is.
Let's call what it is.
Okay, fair enough.
So.
Fair enough.
This is not a.
Yep.
Okay, that's fair. So they're probably going to be charging for them.
They are charging.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
They're charging.
So it's an investment.
Yeah, it's, they're gonna generate revenue off that.
So it's not that prohibitive.
I'm gonna go park my.
That's why.
I don't have an electric car. Not for the big ones.
It certainly doesn't sound electric.
Yeah.
That's why those gentlemen here has a car wash, just put one in, as a revenue stream.
Right.
As a commercial enterprise, it's not.
Okay.
Okay, that's fair. It's not a, it's not just, you know, a business sign for a small business owner.
No.
No, it's a digital revenue stream for, for a property owner.
No.
Which is like Palmville Medical, they're planning on putting in.
Two.
And you think the car wash is doing?
He's two.
Two?
Yeah.
Okay. Then accessory dwelling, okay, then we get down into special permits, 200 for sign.
That seems fair.
And then accessory dwelling unit special permit, so that's if it's a.
For two.
For two.
Which is really.
It's five.
One more.
Two, yeah.
Okay, so the sign special permit, though, is that, so internally illuminated, right, now that we have those by special permit, would that be?
Not just internally illuminated, though, it could be a larger sign, yeah, it could be anything that's, so we've got sign locations, multiple signs, internal illumination.
Anything that's kind of non-conforming.
Yeah.
So $200 for that, but then, don't we have to put it in the paper?
They'll, they'll be paying for that.
Yep, so if you look at the note down below, in addition to the application fee, the applicant will be required to reimburse the town for any advertisement fees.
Gotcha, okay. And that's usually a few hundred dollars in addition to that.
Yeah, runs about 250, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's not, that's not terrible, right?
No. Wasn't, just to play devil's advocate, wasn't one of the original complaints, it costs like 500 bucks to get a sign permitted, and aren't we back to now 500 bucks to get a sign permitted?
I don't.
Or am I misremembering that?
Uh, special permits were 750.
750?
Yeah, before, yeah, if you applied that, it was 750, so we're not, we scaled it significantly down.
Although I will, if it is internally illuminated, now you're adding, in addition, you're adding electrical permits on top of that. Right?
Yeah.
So the, the harder part about this business, in terms of doing business on the town, is, you know, we've been asked to look at our fee schedule, and.
Can't give away everything.
You know, I don't think, I don't think the billing department, somebody's going with electrical permits, reduced the, hasn't given their charge for electrical permit.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I'm just thinking from a small business perspective, to Gary's point, what we, what we were hearing from the folks who want to have a business in town, and all these little things add up when you look at the total cost.
They do.
Because that's without even the sign.
I know.
Yeah. You, you could, you could start lower if you wanted, I mean.
Well, we've only had a couple anyway, so maybe we start here and get feedback, and if it's still prohibitive, we can.
We've had four, I think, and we've waived on this, we said we'd waive it for the first year, which we did. We didn't waive the, the fee for the newspaper.
Not the fee for advertising, just the filing fee.
Because that's really a past year, should be.
Yeah, so really, this is just $200 on top of whatever was happening before, so I think I can live with that, yeah.
Rich, can you explain the difference between 3A and 3B?
3A.
On a minor.
On page two?
Yep. Minor modification, like when you want to eliminate a sidewalk, you have to pay an application for that?
Yes.
In the processing?
Yeah, we, we'd be kind of generous, I would say, by not charging people.
Right, okay.
This is already there, this has been on the book.
Right, I'm saying, are, are we looking to be getting these fees for?
Well, I would say if we just start collecting, we'll be adding to the fees, because we have in charge of these.
So what, what triggers a 3A versus a 3B?
So 3A would be in terms of specifications to change, so the construction standards, those kind of changes, to, I'll say, for example, they wanted to relocate a sidewalk, perhaps, or change the curb, that, that would be something, that would be that revision. The amendment modification revisions, that would be a, a hearing process modification to it. We could just.
I think they both end up with a hearing and we vote if it's a.
The first one, you don't need a hearing. So like if you change.
Maybe, maybe there's some more description on that, that's a non-hearing.
Yeah, we don't have a definition of a non-hearing, but for instance, so I'll give you example, a good example would be like Shire Drive at Industrial Park, it'll be a subdivision modification, one of the things which we'll be asking the board to do is remove street trees. That's not a, a major modification, just a specification to it, so that'd be something that doesn't need a hearing, but you, but you do need to vote to modify the subdivision versus a hearing. I suppose we could, maybe it's not really needed to have it, 3A to 3B?
I just can't tell what, what triggers what.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Yeah, I think we either need to eliminate one, or provide more clarity, because Eric does bring up an excellent point.
Yeah.
I don't either.
I would get rid of 3B, because it's a revision, for each revision to an amendment or a modification.
Yeah, to your point, yeah.
Okay. So yeah, 3B.
No, that makes sense. Yeah.
After May, Eric, will you be like a consultant for us?
Right.
Find all the little details?
This is your last meeting, I just realized that.
Is it?
Oh, wow.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, because the election is before, Tommy.
This is your last meeting.
Well, I'm still going here.
Okay, all right. We'll be sentimental here tomorrow.
Is that five, bonding, including reduction and release request? I'm still going.
What's that? Oh, the, you want me to explain it, or what?
So is that how we figure out what the?
No, we haven't.
Bonding is on a specific project, or?
No, what we've done is, we would, we get a scope and fee, which includes those items in it, and it's all one number, and then that money's put in the escrow account, the project review account, and then as the project goes through the permitting, if there's bond reduction and so forth, we just bill against it, and then if it gets below what we have, we've requested have it replenished, so we don't, we haven't followed that.
So is this really titled bonding, or is this like?
No, no, it is bonding. So if, if somebody's gonna post a bond, we have, we, we give the approved plan to, for example, to BETA, and they do a takeoff of everything that's required to, to build the subdivision, then they assign a means value on it, and they prepare that bond list that you have to think about, like sidewalks, street trees, valves, et cetera. So that's what the bonding is.
So where could there be a line that says that's automatically renewed every year or every two years, so that we don't get caught with pants down when the numbers haven't been updated?
If we go down to.
Yeah.
We do this once, and then.
It's probably outlined in our, in our rules and regs, bonding procedure.
Let me, I could, so, hold on a second. Down in the. Let me take a look. Essentially replenishing it? Oh, that's what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, we're keeping up with the times on.
Yeah.
What costs I should do the work.
We actually have.
It almost could be another item under five of annual review.
I know we haven't, I will tell you, we haven't been in the red, because we don't, we don't have the consultant do the review unless we have the money. But I get your point, so in terms of, because, let me look at it, because I know the ZBA has done, for instance, with the 40Bs, they did have it where if it gets to a certain balance, they have to.
Right, like either 5,000 or 1,000.
So let me work on something and propose it, so I'll, I don't have it for tonight, but to Eric's point, look at that and that provision. Makes sense.
Yep, that's good. You have more?
No.
All right, so I have a, kind of a follow-up to what you were just saying, is while you look into that, what is, so what's the process for this moving forward? So how does it get approved? Do we?
So you'll have to vote it. So we'll have to advertise it in the newspaper twice.
And have a public hearing on it?
Have a public hearing on it, and then like you'd normally do with a public hearing, people come in, comment so forth.
So the plan then would be to, to review this again at our March meeting?
May.
May, god, the other May, the other M month, you know, it's been, I'm sorry, it's really been a long day for me. Um, so, review this in May?
To then advertise it.
Advertise it, and we'd have, have a public hearing in June?
Yeah.
And then vote on it after that public hearing, okay? All right. Okay.
That's the plan.
Sounds good?
Yep, sounds like a good plan.
Yeah.
All right.
And if you... We always could lower the fee, if you wanted to, on any of these, we just can't raise them, you know? Like, after you decide, once you have the public hearing, you decide, all right, well, we want to make an adjustment to lower, we can at least, we can't go the opposite way, you know?
Yeah, right, right.
So just that-
And when you say lower a fee, does it mean lower it as a one-time fee for that particular situation? Or is it, you mean lower it on the off-line?
I don't know if you're like, really, like, cheap, or is that sign permit, 200 bucks, seems-
So then we could officially lower it on, on-
Yeah, I would say you officially voted, say-
Right, we would just do a quick vote, say, we want to lower that to 100 bucks.
Correct.
Right, without a pub, need for a public hearing and-
You would do it at the public hearing, but I'm just saying, so, we advertise it right now, 200 dollars, when it comes to the public hearing, everyone's like, what are you doing? You should lower the fee. Like, all right, fine, we'll lower it to 100 dollars, you can vote it. What I'm saying, you just can't go the opposite way, you know, we're showing a 200, you can't go 300.
Got you, fair.
Always got the room to lower something, you know, scale it back?
I understand.
Could you provide notice that way?
Yes. Okay. Any other-
Any changes on this municipal part?
No, that stays the same, that's pretty much mirrors the statute in terms of 53G. In terms of that end of it, with municipal review fees, that's all statute-driven. The only thing I, so if an applicant, they can't argue the fee, but they could appeal to the select board, saying, oh, that's not, you know, if they didn't like the consultant that the board chose, but-
Does that apply to a rec looking for pickleball courts and wanting to-
No.
Leave our review?
Nope, they can't do that. It's only competence as, as a professional to do the job, not, not the option of reviewing. No. I've, like I would, it's never happened since doing it in the 30 plus years.
Don't jinx it, don't jinx it, Rich.
I'm not gonna jinx it, but anyway.
Yes. Um, any new, any town planner updates, Rich?
No, 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 we kind of talked about Palmville.
We did.
Been around about where, right?
We did Shire, any update on Shire?
No, I don't have any updates yet.
Okay. Um, meetings, so we have-
What are you gonna talk about the, oh, yeah.
No, go ahead, what?
Who's gonna do what, for the zoning article?
Oh, yeah, we, we do need to, yeah, so, I'll, I'll just finish what I was saying, meetings, we do have a meeting prior, the day before town meeting, on the 13th. Chris will not be here, and I just found out a couple days ago that I also will not be here, I have to be in Salt Lake City, and I'm gonna be presenting there, and because of the time change, I'm not gonna be able to attend even remotely. Um, so I won't be there for the 13th, so, so then we do need to talk before we wrap up tonight about who's gonna kind of work on what and present at, at town meeting, because I won't be there as well, unfortunately. Uh, we do have a planning board meeting right before town meeting, so that, town meeting starts at seven, I think ours will start at six, right?
To, uh, to add difficulty here-
Yes.
Eric's not available, and I don't think you should, I'm not very well-liked, I might not win my election, so... I'm not sure if you should be, uh, you know, I, it's just Melissa's gonna do everything. She's the only one.
Eric's leaving.
Eric's leaving.
You, whatever.
I mean, I am more than willing to do, you, even if I'm, even if, you know, can I speak if I'm not a member of the board, right? No.
Well, you can speak as a citizen.
Sure.
Yeah.
But not as a member of the board.
Let, let me present this on behalf of the planning board.
That's probably not, not probably.
As a citizen.
Duly noted, Gary. Gary's getting, not finding a way to get out of all this stuff.
Um, I have, how many times have I presented? I, I drew the short straw and got MBTA communitys.
Yeah, you did great. So, I, anyway, let's just go with the, we have our meeting, the day, on the 13th, which is before town meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, Chris will not be available, I will not be available. We will have one, at least one new member on the board. Maybe two, but-
Will, will you be at town meeting the next day, though?
No, I will not, I, I will be out that, unfortunately, I'll be in Salt Lake City that whole week.
Ski season's over, why are you going to Salt Lake City?
I have to present, I-
He's out, out, so-
So Chris will be at town meeting, just won't be at our meeting the day before.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, these are not, I mean-
So, so let's talk about the articles. So we have, we have our first article, which is ADUs, and my recommendation would be, Melissa'd be best to present on that, because she's, she's, she's got all that knowledge, and she put together, she worked with Rich on all the, the article as well, so, uh, I think it would be very helpful for-
Yeah.
It'd be appropriate for Melissa to present on that.
Yeah, either me or you, Rich.
Yeah, we didn't even see, we didn't even show the Jazzy, well, that's all right.
And so, yeah, so we, she has started some slides on that, there's a couple slides that she has started already, which you were talking about, that, um, speaking of slides for ADUs-
She did take the slide, so the, the one that says, hey, this is what an ADU looks like, that's in there.
That's great, that's in there.
I loved that one, actually, I thought it was really helpful, to see all the different options.
Definitely in there.
And some, some actual pictures, too.
Some, some actuals, yeah.
Very cool.
So she's got a-
Send it out to everyone, do you guys want, you can just comment?
I would send it out.
Yeah.
I would send it out, so everybody could comment back to you directly.
No, me.
To Rich.
To Rich, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Let's send it out, comment to Rich, Rich will feed everything through Rich.
Yep.
Um, so we're working on that, so that's the ADUs, then the, the electrical vehicle, the-
It feels like it could really be the thirds, if you want, right?
It's, yeah.
The, the start and the finish.
Right. So Melissa could do the ADUs, we could have Chris do all the, the other stuff in the middle, which is all the special permits, and floodplain, and all the electrical vehicles.
Yep.
And then have Melissa finish up with the, uh, MBTA. And we saw the slides tonight, so there, again, if you could send those out, and we could comment back through Rich on that.
Yeah, yeah, I think I know, pros and cons might have been a bit of a stretch, so maybe just a comparison chart would be.
Yeah, that, that choice of words is probably not the right choice.
No, because it's not gonna fit everyone, I, I just, I feel like there's gonna be two sides of this argument, you know, it's gonna, not argument, but you know what I mean, two different schools of thought, one of the people that live right around there.
Right.
Um, so it's not really, to see, what's a pro to one is not necessarily to the other.
That's right, yeah, and it's not fair for us to place our judgment on that.
Right.
So we need to come up with, uh, some different terminology there.
So just keep them as bullet points, like, you know, things to note, right?
Yeah.
Um, and, and then take, take away the pros versus, they, they could all exist the way they're written now.
Yeah, just take out pros and cons part, just things to consider, or high-level summary, something.
Key impacts, or key points, or key, key item.
Yeah.
So the moderator, are you aware of presentations for 21 and 24?
Oh, how does that work?
Well, there's an election coming up, so we don't know yet.
We don't know who the moderator's gonna be.
Well-
So there is a moderator meeting here coming up. Uh, Rich, when is that? Cause I haven't seen, it's not on my calendar. So, anyway, there's a moderator meeting that's coming up that, that I would attend, and, uh, we will continue to work with Jay as our current moderator, um, and if, depending on the election, we would have to just pivot. But he'll have the-
Right, but there's gonna be a request to share slides for each of these two.
Yep, there'll be a request to have the slides, and we, Melissa's already got drafts ready, which we will then use tomorrow at our advisory as well.
So maybe go back to some of that one you did earlier, that slide there, just kind of side by side.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Something like that.
Cause that's not, that's literally, that moment you were, were working on earlier.
That's the one we were working on earlier, yeah.
That doesn't say, it's just a comparison.
Yeah, all it is, so that's basically what I had in that table in the other document, then I extrapolated kind of further, and I probably don't need to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But keep it simple.
So we don't know when the moderator's meeting will be yet.
Yeah, but we, we still move forward, and we'll have a moderator meeting, and, and he'll, Jay will ask for the slides, and we'll have, we'll have those, we'll have those ready.
Right.
We don't probably need slides for the ones that are, like the-
So on list 23, I can anticipate a question for, you're asking me to vote on this floodplain map with a, a future date on it. Has anybody seen it? Can I see it?
Seen the map?
Yeah, so I, I, I think that would be a, a handout or a slide that's ready on deck to, to show, but how do I know what to vote on if I, I want to see where's my property? Am I, am I in it, am I out of it? Doesn't change what my vote's gonna be, but I want to know what I'm-
Well, there is a whole process to, if, if, when the map changes, and if your, if your property is impacted by it, there's a whole mailing that goes out with that, but I know what you're saying.
We're voting on it.
I know, I know.
Voting on what? And let's see it, show them the map.
Yeah.
We don't have it.
No, I think you probably have a draft of it.
We probably have a draft of it somewhere, it's just not-
Yeah, I could, uh-
Great, but that's what we're voting on.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you.
I'm voting on, I'm voting on.
Yeah.
So, why aren't you running again? I like Melissa's idea, we're gonna, we're gonna utilize you as a consultant.
Yeah, we can do a map, um, yes, yeah, it's interesting.
I think we should have that available, Rich, just have it available if it comes up.
Hmm.
Be better to be prepared and not need it than to need it and not have it.
It's kind of nice to be-
I was just thinking that it was a date change, but you're right, it's a whole map that is changing, we should have something.
Okay.
So it's another one just to say, I want a slide. These are flesh up, here it is, here's the, we can't change what's on the map, but here, here's the map that you're looking at.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and, and probably have a handout with it.
Yeah.
Problem is a handout map, I mean, it's gonna be so small, I mean, hard to read.
Yeah.
Especially in black and white.
Well-
You could publish a link to it ahead of time, and you say, here, you go on the JS viewer and turn on that layer and see the new proposed... That's where it's useful, that's, when you can zoom in and actually see something.
Mm-hmm. And then are we gonna do, we'll do the same thing as last time, right, where we have all of our backup, all the handouts and everything, but put them on the website ahead of town meeting, so people can go through it all?
Yeah. Yeah, we could, um...
That's where we can put the link.
That might be helpful, yeah.
Put the link to the map there.
To put it on the website, too. Yeah, cause the map, oof.
That'd be a hard hand.
Floodplain, map, sir.
No, at least if you show it on the screen.
Yeah, yeah.
Either, we could show.
Better to have a link where people could zoom in and-
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. No, that'd make, that's a good point.
So does that seem like a good plan? Have-
Yeah.
Broken up Melissa to ADUs, Chris does, uh, the EVs, map, permits, and then, then have Melissa finish up with the, uh, MBTA zoning. Are you good with that?
Mm-hmm.
So make sure.
I can be the understudy for any of that, then if I'm there, then.
Moral support?
Yes.
Um, I have the very, very, very last article of the night.
Yeah.
That's gonna be whoever's left in the room to vote on that, which is gonna be interesting.
You don't want to hang around for it, yeah?
No, I'm gonna be there either way, I just feel like people are gonna be like, could you please speed it up?
Okay, uh, anything else, any other?
Now, what would be really cool is if we just, should I talk to the tech people over at the school? Is if we could just, you know, go on it live, kind of thing?
Go on it live?
Is there already a layer, though?
The map is live.
Oh.
You mean to see the map on the GS site?
Yeah, I want to see if I can get the, the-
Why couldn't you?
They should be able to.
Who controls the laptop that they use?
The school does.
It's in the be, it's in the-
Yeah, in the back.
Yeah, the back.
All right, let me noodle on it, yeah, I, I mean... I get, obviously I get Eric's point, so-
Yeah.
Should have a map, so-
It would be good if we had a link, like Melissa's saying, if, if we, we post all, everything in advance-
Yeah.
On the site, we post a link to this on the site, so that they could go look in-
Yeah.
In advance.
Who posts that on there? Do you guys have somebody that you send it to, and then they post the updates on the website, or do you just have a login to do it yourself?
We have a login.
Uh, for the main page, it's, um, well, for the main homepage, it's, um, IT does that. But on our webpage, I do that.
Yeah, each department does their own.
Just curious.
Hmm. Okay.
Okay. And he-
Chris can be the-
Yeah, and I'll talk to Chris, I'll-
The floodplain.
I will reach out to Chris here when he gets back. Well, I'll shoot him an email, just to let him know and what, what we're planning, so he can be prepared.
Send him a message now, so it's the first thing he sees that makes that-
Yeah, cause I mean, here's the, the, the reality of it is, we are not gonna meet as a board to talk about any of this prior to, prior to needing to have these things ready. We will meet-
Unless you wanted to have another special meeting.
No, no. And I don't think there's a need for that, I'm just-
You really want to beat last year's hours, hours of meetings.
We will have a time as a board to meet prior to town meeting, but not to work on this, because this will all need to be done here in the next few weeks.
Yeah.
So, uh, but I think Melissa has a really good start, um, on the drafts for the ADU and the MBTA, and Rich will send those out, and we can make comments on those, and I think we can pull all that together remotely, individually.
Pretty good order.
Yeah. Okay.
If only we could move our articles way up.
Well, we could ask, so we can, we can ask that-
When you're late to the game with the MBTA articles, you get the-
You get the last spot.
A low man on the total poll.
Well, I mean, you, you can ask to, that's the moderator.
We ask the moderator, that's what the moderator meeting is for, so the MBTA article at our last meeting did get moved, we, the, it didn't get moved on the warrant-
Taken out of order.
It was taken out of order, because they wanted, we wanted to make sure that we had the, um, we didn't want, we didn't want the people to drop off, like you're worried about. So it was right after we approved the budgets.
You want the last, but sure.
Well, not so much the, I think, people are gonna leave either way, I think, but, um, unless they're really interested in it. But I think, um, in general, I just like being the last one, when everybody's just like, looking at their watches, waiting to go get a beer.
Get a beer. Where-
It is the last article.
It's the last one, because it's just in orders, how, how they're-
Director of Public Works, Town Clerk, Select Board.
I was part of Town Government Study Committee years ago, and we were trying to devise ways to completely randomize, uh, warrants, because we were so afraid of people packing in to vote yes on something, and then leaving, or no on something, and leaving.
There's surveys out right now about that very thing.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Randomized, uh-
Not, just like, what would you like? And some people are like, I would like town meeting to be one hour, and they're like, wow, and then somebody else, what was another one? Somebody said, I think town government should be abolished. And, you know, there's a lot of different answers, um, floating around, but like, I would like it on a weekend, or I would like, you know, all that stuff.
Yeah, we looked at, we, we had a committee that looked at all this stuff. We didn't get much through, select board wasn't, uh, we couldn't even get remote meetings done. Now, now look at how it is.
All you need was a pandemic.
Kind of thing, like a recommendation from that way back when?
Yeah, we had a set of recommendations, we sent to select board, and, um, a couple of them, like, you know, changing the name of select board instead of selectman, like, those got taken, but the remote meeting was-
You were way ahead of your time there, look.
Yeah, look at that.
That was advanced. Well, not that, but-
Okay, yeah, not that, but I mean, look at what we did, we're, remotes, remote's a good thing.
Thanks, COVID.
Silver lining, that's what we call it.
Uh, any last comments? So that's, that's the plan to get ready for town meeting.
Yes.
All right, well, before we part, I thank you.
Thank you, Eric.